We're going to go ahead and call our meeting to order. And I'd like everybody to please rise. We're going to do a pledge of allegiance. Then we're going to do a moment of silence after our pledge of allegiance. And you guys figure out what you want to do with that moment of silence, okay? Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation, united, indivisible, infinite and justiciable.
Okay, thank you. All right, item three on our agenda is a roll call. Clear roll call, please.
Mayor Ledford?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Correa?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffauer?
Here.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
We have a forum.
All right, let's go to item four on our agenda, presentations. We have with us tonight from our animal care center. We have, where's our critter? Here he is. Come on up. This dog should not go home without a home to go to. You'll think about that. One of you lucky people could adopt this dog.
It could be you.
So, good, good.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Jesse. I'm from the Palmdale Animal Care Center. And we'll meet tonight. I have this little rancorous pit. His name is Benji. He's four months old. He came to us homeless. We picked him up on 4th of July, so he probably escaped during the fireworks. And nobody's come for him yet. So, he belongs to us. And now we want him to go to a good home.
Looks like he's picking out his own. The Sanchez family might be a good location.
So, we named him Benji. He's, I can tell you, he's four months old. Came to us as a stray. This is my first time meeting this dog today. Someone looking around for a dog that I can bring over here tonight. And he was just laying in his pad, just minding his own business. So, I took him out. And soon as I got him on the leash, he was like, "Let's go outside." So, we went out to the yard and we started playing. And I told him to sit, and he sat right down. He might know something. So, from there, I told him to stay, and he just stared at me while I backed away from him, telling him to stay. And then I called him, and he just ran out, wanted to jump up into my arms, but I know he's pretty strung up. So, I didn't let him jump up into my arms, but I told him to stop, and he stopped and sat down, which is unusual for a puppy beginning, you know? They just want to jump all over you and scratch you and use them razors to get to know you a lot better. But he is, looked like he has had some training when he was at home. And it's stuck with him because when we were doing a pledge of allegiance, he sat down on my feet and stayed there and just looked around like, "Wow, this is pretty cool." Usually they start barking or whining or something, but not Benji. He is a people dog. Loves to be around people, as you can see, he'll go to anybody. Come on, Benji. So, he's available. He is fixed. He's got all his shots for the year. He's got his pit as rented. And he was, I say he was a failed CTA. By that, I mean that somebody had a commitment to adopt on him. And I guess when it came to the interview process, they must have failed the interview for some reason or another, so Benji didn't get to go home that day. Pit bulls, we do any dominant breed, actually. We do, it's county policy to do an interview with the adopting party to make sure that they're not going to use a dog for anything but a pet and to be a home-loving animal, you know? So, whether it be Doberman, Chow, Shar-Pei, Pids, Rottweilers, they will get interviewed before the animal is adopted to them. So, in order for somebody to fail a CTA, he's going to knock me over. Come here, boy. Go on, sit. Sit. That's it. Yeah. The officers, they, when they're doing the interview, they make sure that you have the ability to care for an animal like this. They also, if you live in an apartment, they will call the landlord to make sure that these types of animals are allowed in the apartment complex to begin with. If they're not, sorry, you can't get the dog. You know, that's just county policy. It's a good policy because we know dogs are going to a good home. So, Benji is available. He is in, what was his room number? He's in 1503. If you want to come see him, you will meet and greet with him, play with him in the yard, you know, get to know him better. Or if you have somebody who's looking for a puppy pit, you don't have to come down.
So, we're looking for a couple of things. Number one, to bring this to your attention, there's a great dog you could adopt. Or you might want to participate as a volunteer. That's always an option for you. And the shelter needs, what we want to do is build a culture that's supportive of our animal shelter, and we get a lot of volunteers to help, it really makes the whole thing work much better. And you could do what he's doing, show up at council meetings and show off your best dog.
Sure thing.
Well, we appreciate you coming in.
I appreciate being here, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So much. All right, Benji's here if you like him. All right, Benji, showtime's over.
Yep.
Benji's a beautiful dog.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. All right, this time, we're going to recognize our community queens. So, if we can bring up the Palmdale Court, Miss Palmdale, Junior Miss Palmdale, and Little Miss Palmdale. Ladies, good to see you.
It's a pleasure.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is our new Palmdale Court queens. And they'll be serving for, well, about eleven months now or ten months. These girls have already hit the ground running. They're very active in the community. You've probably have seen them around already. So, they are newly crowned, and they are getting to know our community. And we wanted to take an opportunity to bring them here tonight, introduce them to you, present them with some certificates that basically says, "You did great, you won." And the transformation begins. Because imagine you put yourself in a position of one of these queens where you start out, you may not even understand the total role of the responsibility. But once you get involved, you are in deep, and these ladies are in deep. And they're doing a fabulous job already. So, the beautiful thing about this is we got all year to watch them evolve, to get even better than they are. And I know in the beginning, sometimes they're too shy to even say anything. That's not these girls. But we do get some that are. But it's amazing, after a year, they have become transformed, and they're very assertive if they're not already. So, this is a good thing. I've never really understood how pageants work until I got involved with local government. We saw what a Palmdale pageant means and what it means to these individual ladies and how they qualify. It's not just beauty, it's the whole package. And so, that's a good thing. And we have a good relationship with the Pageant Committee, and you guys do a great job for our city. So, we wanted to present a certificate. So, what I'm going to start off with is I'm going to go with the Little Miss City of Palmdale, Giselle Phelan.
Giselle.
Giselle. Giselle is not shy. In case you had a question about that. Anyway, welcome aboard. You're welcome. And then we have Brooke Sands, Junior Miss City of Palmdale.
Thank you.
Present this to you. Congratulations, welcome aboard. And then I'm going to read Victoria's certificate. It's pretty simple. It just says, "The City of Palmdale would like to extend this expression of our pride in your accomplishment. I'm being named Miss City of Palmdale. We are honored to have you represent the city as you perform community service, attend community events, and serve as a role model to young women." Clearly, these ladies do exactly that. So, Victoria, behalf of the City of Palmdale, congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, you're Palmdale Court. Now, Miss Palmdale, would you like to say something?
Well, first off, my name is Victoria RC. I am just so happy that I got crowned. Honestly, this is my first pageant. I didn't know what I was getting myself into, but I'm so happy. Honestly. But I'm very happy that I was crowned because honestly, I did not know there was so many things I go on in our community, and I'm glad that I get to represent it. Palmdale's awesome. You know it. We love this city, and Michael and I are going to do an excellent job to make sure that Palmdale is the best as always.
Yay, very good.
Hi, everyone. I'm Brooke. I'm Junior Miss Palmdale. I think it's a really good thing that, like, I really enjoyed that I got crowned because I love getting to know these two. And we just get along really well, and I think it's really fun.
Hi, I'm Jeff Phelan, and I'm Little Miss Palmdale 2018. I just love Palmdale.
Well, that's the right spirit. All right, let's do a picture. Excellent, ladies. Thank you.
Thank you again. Thank you for having us.
You bet. We'll see you all this year, right?
Of course.
Let's give our court a round of applause. All right, our next presentation. Highland High Varsity Softball Team. They did some amazing work. We're going to bring all you ladies up front. So, if you want to mass over here, what I'd like to do is bring the coach up or somebody that wants to speak for the team.
Somebody can pronounce the names, huh?
What we'll do is we're going to introduce you guys individually, bring you up and give you your certificate. First, you're going to show us the hardware. So, why don't you give us a little narrative on what transpired? And yeah, we won, but you can give us a little bit of the journey.
Well, there's five seniors on the team, and if you guys could raise your hands, we're missing one. These kids were actually on a team back in 2015. Thank you, thank you. 2015, and some of you, if anybody calls softball, there's a kid that played for us named Rachel Garcia, who is actually playing right now for the Team USA. She's actually playing right now down in Irvine. And this team, that team went to the finals, and we played 13 innings, and Rachel blew her knee out. And we lost with two minutes to go before it would have been a tie. So, these five seniors, who, one person played in the field, the other one ran for as a pinch runner. And these kids put in time, and three years later, we made it back to the CIF championship game, and we win the whole thing. So, it was just a pretty incredible run from start to finish. We set our goals in little increments and accomplished every single one of those from starting in the fall to Golden League, which we won our first Golden League title in three years also, and outright, and then continued on and won five in a row to take the CIF championship. And it's, as Mr. Mayor said, it's the first time in school history. There's only one other team in the Golden League, which was Quartz Hill, and I'm not sure the year. It's been quite a few years that they had won a CIF championship. A couple other teams up here, Roseman has won one or two actually, Perickley won two, but they're not in the Golden League. So, this was the first time in quite a few years that someone from the Golden League and the Allen Valley representing CIF champions.
Good job. Well, that's very good. Ladies have done us proud. But I want to recognize the adult side of this as well. I mean, this stuff doesn't happen without a lot of participation from not only volunteers but parents. It's a group effort to make all this happen. So, anyway, good job to everybody engaged. You've done our city very, very proud. All right, I'm going to bring up right now Isaac Barzalona. He's representing our Congressman Steve Knight. He has some certificates as well as I have some certificates, so somehow we're going to get these things passed out. I want to let her say a few words.
Well, good evening. I'm Isaac Barzalona, representing Congressman Steve Knight. And I'm also a big softball fan, big softball player, and I understand what you guys went to get to what you did. And it takes a lot from all of you, the team effort, Coach, congratulations. Like you said, this is really special, what you did. And so, we are here to congratulate you. I have some certificates of congressional recognition for you, and we're all cheering for you and celebrating you on a job well done. Congratulations, champions.
If you can help me with this, I'm going to call these ladies up one at a time. What we can do is this, why don't we recognize, and then they can sort these out?
Yeah.
Sort them out?
Yeah, that works.
All right, who's our first recipient?
Annika Googler.
Good job. Congratulations. There you go.
Alexa Alvarez.
Good job. Congratulations.
Ariel Nieto.
Good work. Appreciate you. Let me read this certificate, because they all say the same thing. Let me read one, just so we understand what it says. City Palmdale hereby extends its congratulations on your accomplishment for being the first Highland High School softball team to win the CIF Southern Section Division VI Championship. And your spirit of competition, dedication, enthusiasm, and good sportsmanship are an inspiration to this community. I guess I could say our community. So, good job, you guys.
Ashley Brammer. Catalina Aguilar. I can also say that she is the Division VI Pitcher of the Year also. Courtney Sierra.
Congratulations. Thank you.
Dominique Rhodes. Jocelyn Correa. Also on the Junior National Team from Mexico. Caitlin Cronish.
She's the first recipient of the Congressional.
Kayla Sandoval. Mariah Jamison.
All right, let's move down a little more.
Morgan Bohack, she is not here. She's actually working tonight, so she's not here. Natalie Gomez. Rosalyn Correa. Sierra Aguilar. Trinity Holman, who is not here also. And for the first time, we even have a team manager on the team, a student team manager, and Brandy Sahagan, she's hanging out in the beach, so she's not here.
I can't imagine why she'd be there.
Me, Doug Harmon. Also Coach of the Year. Scott Rutledge. Gary Black, who retired in Utah, so he's no longer with us, but we'll get this.
He went out a winner.
Yep. And Mike Teaks.
Let's get a picture. All right, ready? I'm sorry. All right, let's give another Palmdale. Good job. Favor? Any opposed? It's ordered. Let's now go to item six. This is the public comment period for the consent calendar. If you are here for a consent calendar item and wish to speak on a consent calendar item, this will be your opportunity to come forward and give us maybe a reason why we might consider doing that. And the reason I say that is because we typically can approve the entire consent calendar. These are typically routine items, and you typically could approve them all. However, we're going to walk through this, and if somebody from the public wishes to speak, so be it, and then we're going to give the council an opportunity to pull any items that they would like. So, anybody from the audience want to speak to an item on item seven, Consent Calendar? Yes, sir?
I checked in my little paper. My name is Gary Coke. I wish to address 7.15, 7.20, and 7.21. On the 7.5, it says release of the Avenue West corridor plan. I thought Avenue West was all completed.
Well, it is, except for the retention, the bonds, and landscaping has to go.
And also, I must note that from the firehouse going back towards 20th Street East to the shopping center, there is about 50 to 75 feet of unpaved, uncurbed, the whole, all of Avenue West is pristine from Sierra Highway up to 47th, except for that one little section. Enough said, we need to work on that some now. On 7.20, the presentation I was at last night for the complete streets project was very nice. I'm wondering why they would need additional design services. It seemed like the presentation was quite complete, quite succinct on what they were going to do already, unless they take some of the suggestions that came from the audience and would have to give design on that. But other than that, it seemed rather complete to me. On the last item, 7.21 is approving the architectural design, and I got confirmation from Mr. Davis of your public works area that would include working at the design for the handicap accessibility of the library computer pit area. I gather they are planning either, to fill it in either by raising the floor or cementing it in, because in its present state, it is not handicap accessible and not in compliance with any ADA regulations concerning public libraries for accessing space in a public library. And the floor as it is now is very non-managable for anybody to walk or, or cane, or anything like that, because it's very uneven. So, I hopefully that will get approved and that will forward this project. I appreciate working with Mr. Herniman and Mr. Davis and others on various things connected with the city, but in particular this one, because it affects my wife. She's in a wheelchair, and she doesn't like coming with me or my son to use the computer because she can't get to it. And usually, the handicap one has already been taken, so hopefully this will remedy that situation for me. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anybody else wish to speak on the consent calendar? All right, seeing none, now let's go to the City Council. Anybody on the council wish to pull an item for discussion?
7.13. 7.15.
7.18.
Anybody else? How about a motion to approve the consent calendar? Got a motion in a second to approve the consent calendar, less items, 713, 715, and 718. Any discussion? Let's do a voice vote, please.
Mayor Ledford?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Correa?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffauer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
All right, then let's go to item 7.13.
So, Mr. Mayor, I don't know that we need a complete report unless Mike wants to add something to this, but I just wanted to commend our staff on this item. There were communities that, I went to a meeting right after this was announced, and I had people there that were from some large communities, West Hollywood and other places like that, that were just amazed at the amount of this award. There were huge cities that got like 70 grand. And we got, Mike, how much?
$435,000.
$435,000. Well done.
All right, any other questions, discussion on that item? What a motion, listen.
Second.
Got a motion in a second? Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Let's go to 7.15.
I pulled out, I actually wanted to comment because this is an important project, especially in my district, because other than those sort of housing crisis slash rush, this will help our developers further develop that area west of the freeway on Avenue S to show the development that we can do, the traffic study, the density, and things of that nature. The last couple council meetings, we passed concern residents, expressed their concerns about future development here. And this is just one step closer that we have the ability to get the proposal done for the study. So, I wanted to thank the staff for pushing this through and getting it done, because it takes us one step closer to get some sticks in the ground and get some more development happening. So, thanks, guys.
Yeah, I would follow up with that. It's also a promise we made to the community at the time we decided we wanted to do a master plan on that. Then the economy came in, and it made it pretty hard to do that. So, we're back, and now the pressure is enough on Avenue S to do a land use plan, so people have a reasonable expectation of what's going to happen in their neighborhood. So, it's, I got to commend the staff for follow-through.
And even better, it's going to be done by, yeah, it's going to be done with grant funds as opposed to being funded by developers. And the residents have a concern with that, so it's, it kind of puts it more of a level playing field for what's best for the community. so it's, it kind of puts it more of a level playing field for what's best for the community.
I agree, but I would also tell you that even if the developers paid for it, they would not hire this person.
Oh, of course not.
We would hire them, and they would put their money through us. We'd be down to it. So we always want that certain degree of separation.
Right.
So, good point.
I just want to add to that, that it's going to make the everyday life easier for the residents of Alverde, since they have to come for shopping all the way down to Sierra Surriera and Palm del Lago. For this study, there may be an opportunity to have.
Yeah, it's to help better define what's going on there, get people an expectation, because I remember when we did the general plan update back in another lifetime ago, that thing, that those were just holding pattern zonings and stuff that were down there, so.
Yeah.
I'd move to approve this item.
Second.
Got a motion, second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Let's go to our final item, seven point two one.
Seven point one eight.
One eight.
One eight.
Sorry. So I wanted to pull that item, because I do agree with the rejection of the bid that was received for that, those shade structures. And at the same time, it gives us an opportunity to have community input as to the placement of those shade structures. During the briefing, I had that discussion with staff, and probably looking at where we could add a couple of shade structures close to the playground, because when I take my kids over there, they're four years old, and we're just up to standing in the sun. And since this is not going to get done anyway by the end of the summer, because of the rejection of the fee being too high for the installation, this gives the residents an opportunity to be able to comment and get the input as to where those shade structures would be better placed. Again, being a parent myself, taking my kids to that park, there's just no shade, and as I understand, the shade structures will be placed where the benches are, which makes sense, but at the same time, they're not close enough to the playground, so that we can keep them around the kids.
Yeah, we're the dog park here.
Yeah.
We're open to dogs.
Because there will be one shade structure, I believe, at the dog park.
There'll actually be two shade structures over there, and the remaining four will be around the existing picnic tables. But we also were directed to look at getting costs for a couple smaller shade structures, and then Mr. Correio would look at where he would like to have them.
So again, I'd like to ask the council to give that additional direction to staff to look at the cost of two additional smaller structures, maybe four by tents. We can get a bid on, and then, again, have the community participate, since there was barely any input when that part was designed. That's the reason I pulled the item.
That really is a great park. I have more positive feedback for people that love taking their dogs there, and every time I go by there, there's more and more people there. It really is going to accentuate the community. So I'm looking forward to seeing more.
I'm looking forward to the other three that we promised.
Those will happen, yeah.
All the time.
All right.
All right, let's approve. Motion? Do I hear a second?
Second.
You're two seconds.
Sir, four and three seconds.
Any other comments? All in favor?
Excuse me, hold on.
City attorney, do you want to provide direction to staff to look at the additional shade structures?
I thought that was.
I believe that Ms. Lynn.
Any question on that?
No.
Good. There you go.
We're good? We voted, right? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. All right, let's go now to item nine, we have appointments. First item is, oh, item eight, excuse me, eight point one. This is the alternate delegate position to the Antelope Valley Transit Authority.
You know, I think before, I think this is premature, Mr. Lefford, because we need to actually have a JPA amendment if we're going to appoint a resident on that as a permanent position. So I think we need to get a JPA amendment circulated between the agencies, because, you know, right now, we just got an empty frame up there, so. And, but to get a regular appointment up there, the bylaws currently require two council members, and you can have another person regularly attend, but if nobody's willing to take that spot, then we need to just get a JPA amendment itself.
And do you want to know when it's due?
They won't change the time.
Okay.
All right, so basically, what I'm hearing is direction back is to get a modification to JPA.
I think that's the only alternative at this point.
I think it's reasonable. Are we okay with that?
Should we move to date uncertain?
Let's move until, yeah, dated certain. All right? That's a motion?
So moved.
I'll second, and unless we have any questions, I'm going to say all in support, say aye?
Aye.
All right, we're good to go. Let's go to item eight point two. Now, wait, we do have a public comment period here for that first item, eight point one. Anybody wish to make comment on that?
I do.
Please, come forward.
Good evening, council members, mayor, and staff. My name is Angel Ware, I just got appointed to the planning commission, and the reason why I want to speak on this behalf is because you are looking for alternates to serve on this board. I just want to make sure that they understand that you don't need a diploma. It's good, I promote that, I'm for education, but for you degrade somebody or humiliate somebody because they don't have a diploma to represent their constituency, I don't appreciate that. I don't. I need a diploma to precinct walk for you, I need a diploma to phone bank for you, but I need a one to be an appointed commissioner. I don't think it goes right.
Just my.
But it's your opinion, and this is mine. I want the public to listen, I want the public to know that it's not about me. I don't have BIi attitude. It's we, the city, our constituency, that's who we work for. So I just want to let you know that hopefully you let these individuals that are going to apply or you're going to point, let them know prior to them coming for the appointment that if they need a GED or better, you know, that way you won't embarrass them in front of the public right now. Thank you, and have a good night.
Anybody else wish to speak? All right, seeing none. Let's now go to item eight point two. We'll just leave that public comment period open for when we hear it again. All right, eight point two, this is a representative and at-large rep for the North County, Los Angeles County Transportation Coalition.
So I think that when I brought this matter up previously and in having some further discussions with Mr. Partey, he seems to be okay with the appointment. I think it would help create that, it would help the balance with some of the other appointees that are on there. So I would suggest that Mr. Partey could fill that role. So do we need a motion on that?
Well, unless we have some discussion. Would you want to discuss that?
I think that would be okay. There would be no conflict in that. You would?
There isn't here a conflict in that.
It does put the city manager in a position of potentially voting against his bosses on the board, but we've talked through that, and it's one of those high-risk, low-opportunity issues, is what I call it, so it would be a rarity at best, and so I have no problem with serving on that board.
So you feel comfortable with that?
I think so.
Okay, so I'll make a motion.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion, second, any other discussion?
Hold on a second. This was to provide recruitment direction, so we'll have to come back. The idea is to close the recruitment at this point, we would have to come back for the actual appointment.
Okay, well, then maybe we need to modify that to close the recruitment and bring back the resolution to fill that role, right? Was that your motion, Ed?
Yeah, I'll make that motion with those modifications.
Second.
If you got a motion, a second. Discussion?
Yep.
I would tell you, my only concern, and I don't really have a concern, but I'll voice it anyway, the idea is to bring diversity to the board, so you have different perspectives, private sector, elected official perspective. So when we appoint our own, we're not getting that outside perspective, we're getting another one of us, and that's okay, but I think, long-term, it'd be nice to have somebody in the private sector that had an interest in transportation, that'd like to help be an advocate as well. So that's my two cents. Anybody else?
Yeah, I think we always have that opportunity. If someone ends up saying, yeah, I'd like to do that, then we can always, nothing says that that's cast in stone for anybody, you know?
Well, it's hard to undo this. You ring this bell, the chances are he's not going to be leaving for any time soon.
I have moved people.
Any other thoughts? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? So ordered. Let's go to item eight point three now. Palmdale Aerospace Academy, we have a three-year term. You know what, guys, I'm sorry, I left out the public on the last one as well.
You left it open.
No, I left it open for the first item, for the ABDA. Eight point two, though, now we're looking to appoint our city manager to North County Transportation Coalition. Anybody wish to speak on that item?
Eight point two?
Eight point two. All right, seeing none? Thank you. Let's go to eight point three. This is an aerospace academy appointment, it's a three-year term, commences on August 1st, 2018, and that is, Laura Bettencourt, your term?
Yes.
Your term is expiring. So we got some applicants, and I got to tell you, we got a pretty darn good applicant in here that I've got to bring, because I just think it's exactly the type of person we want. And that is, this is a jet propulsion laboratory employee, director of technical learning and development for JPL, wants to be on our aerospace academy, and I would like to suggest that we seriously consider this individual. Anthony Wayne Cagallario, Caglardo? I know I'm mispronouncing his name.
Are you requiring him to be able to say it?
No, good thing. But I would say we got some pretty good applicants for this board, and again, the point of the aerospace academy is to create a board directors that can advise the school on how to partner basically with the private sector. So we didn't get leaders like JPL or like the head of Skunk Works, which we do have on our board. We've got the guy from, headed up, not Virgin Galactic, but the spaceship one, Kevin Mickey, is also on that board. So that's my suggestion, is we seriously consider this technical division chief, basically, for appointment to the aerospace academy.
Do we have any of these applicants here today with us?
We have two.
And myself here, too. I actually applied for that position, too. To an open to the public, or?
We're ready. Any other discussion or questions?
So, but, so that will leave us with no council member on that board?
Looks like it.
And that's where I think that we should continue to have a council member on that board. We had the mayor and Ms. Vetta here serve for two terms without having to go through an application process. The last appointment we did went through an application process, because that's what the council decided to do, and we appointed someone else that is not a council member. The idea to have a partnership with the TPAA, the founder's school district and the city, is to benefit the entire community, as the TPAA girls have done a wonderful job, beautiful school, great graduates, in fact, one of the graduates applied for the position also, I believe, is here as well. That is great to have young people wanting to participate in these type of positions, but I do believe that it's important to continue to have a council member at that partnership.
I disagree. I am the council person that holds that position right now, and I had a break between my council appointments, and I was a director at large, I was not on the council, and the reason that I was on that board is because I am previous aerospace, and I am an instructor, I'm a college instructor, so I have both educational background and aerospace background.
You should agree.
I believe that politics should be left out of the school board. I don't believe that there's a place for appointed officials on that board. I think it's a distraction.
That was not the case six years ago, when that took place, there was no.
We were new and we were learning, we had clearly learned from our mistakes.
I'm still trying to make my point here to continue to have that partnership, because it's important for everybody to continue that partnership. Just because of what happened with the mayor, now we have NASA that is gone from the partnership of that TPAA school. They were a great asset. There is no representative from NASA right now. I believe that they left. So there's no representative from NASA now, because they left the city. There was a board.
They are a partner.
They are.
There.
I agree.
So let's go frame it into something, it's not.
Okay. Well, anyway, it's a great partnership to continue to have. Not only am I a council member, that school is in district four, the district that I represent, I also have experience, I was a previous board member for the founder's school district. That's why I think that it's important to continue that partnership. You want to see me as a council member, I am a council member, I'm also a member of that community, because it's in district four. I represent them, and I have a perfect fit to be part of that board. I really don't see the logic now that, now it's, it doesn't make sense to have a council member at that board, since we had two of them for six years, and I understand what you just said. But there was no application process, it was a good, a new venture.
Brand new.
Yes. But again, I think that it's important to continue to have that partnership. Not having a council member, it just, to me, tells me that the partnership is no longer appreciated, and I know that there's been discussions at the board to not have the city anymore as part of the partnership, and I disagree. With that, I'd like to, for the council to consider me to be appointed to that position. Thank you.
I would say that all makes sense. The fact is, you did serve on the school district, and the school district also has appointees on this board, so we got pretty good coverage in that area. I'm looking at, how do you spread the technical expertise and connect kids to opportunity in the private sector where this work is actually taking place? It's very important, and I don't, I don't, I mean, we have great applicants, but you get somebody from JPL that is in a leadership position that wants to be on this board, ladies and gentlemen, I think you've got to take that very serious, because that is something that just doesn't happen. This is something you earn through the relationship, and quite frankly, the school district does have lots of representation already on this board, so we're getting a good partnership there. I just, again, the message is, when you don't take highly qualified people up on their suggestion, I think it sends a mixed signal. It's a bad sign to tell people that, no, your expertise is not valued. This is exactly what we want for our school.
I hear both sides of the discussion over here. I agree, disagree. I'd like to, you know, I'd like to hear from the people who came today to make sure that they got their voice heard at that appropriate a time.
It's just about there. We're done talking. Do you have any other questions?
I'm good.
All right, let's open up for the public. Public comment. Now, that's, we need to make sure we keep our timeline on, okay? So if you raise your hand when we get to three minutes, we're good to go. I'm not worried about Mark, but.
Mr. Mayor, council, thanks again for opening up this conversation. My concern, again, you know, I'll be terming out on the Palmdale Aerospace Academy, the 23rd of July, and my engagement, again, having the experience sitting on the Palmdale School Board, as well as a director on the aerospace academy, has been, you know, commitment, not only just to attend the board meetings, but also to engage with the students. And, you know, going back and forth, Mr. Correio, with all due respect, I'm not here to disagree with you or debate you, but your support for when you were on the Palmdale School Board has been zero, again, due to the unions and all the politics involved with that, sir. Last time I called you out, you finally showed your support as a city council member. Friends of the academy, I know, understand these are events, but your support as a school board member, us needing, reaching out to you for the support, you didn't provide. City council, fast forward, sir, you weren't out there, and all it was, was just friction. You know, we gained a lot of momentum, and are both agency between the school, the city, and the school board, finally are on the table. No substance from you, sir, no disrespect, but, you know, we need to really actually think about who we're going to put on that committee. And again, I'm for, you know, some partnerships, but Kevin Mickey, James Durrell, great individuals, but their commitment to their employers minimizes. As my, one of my directors, they miss a lot of meetings. We can't have that. As my, my, one of my directors, they miss a lot of meetings, we can't have that. We need a full-time, when called, director to not just for the school, but to engage with kids. So this is what this, this is what this community really needs, is someone who can commit and give their 110%. And also, too, is for the city of Palmdale, you want someone who could work with you and have that energy to provide that. And governance, very important, to be able to govern both sides. Because it, again, we know the politics between charter schools, what's going on right now. But again, the purpose is for the kids, we should keep it there, there is something great and the other schools should emulate what is being done. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have to make a correction to that statement. When I was appointed to be president of the board in 2016, I was the very first member of the Pondhurst School District to reach out to Ms. Master Herman. Within my appointment on December of 2015, I actually called, uh, Master Herman and made an appointment to meet with her. This is when the school was on the old site on 2015 Avenue R. Uh, I met with her, went to the campus, so I actually reached out to the TPAA when I became a president of the board. After that, um, the entire board did a tour to all the charter schools, including the TPAA. So I have been present at the TPAA. Again, before my time at the school board, no board member made an attempt to connect with the TPAA. And also, I have created a three-agency, uh, meetings with the city, uh, the Pondhurst School District, uh, the city, the sheriff's department, and other, the high school district, the West High School district. And I've reached out to the TPAA as well. I actually invited them to come and meet with us during those meetings, so that we don't have to bring them to will. When I went to your board meeting on May, I listened to the discussion, and this was just about the shooting at Highland. And there was a discussion of, um, measures to prevent what happened. And I mentioned it, you're welcome to come to meet with us, way to the community. So I have been present at the TPAA.
Sir, if you consider two meetings at the whole time, it's fine. That's fine, you know, one can justify that. I'm just saying, council, please, select who you're gonna appoint on that board and ask them to bring some substance and some good material. Represent not only the city, but the aerospace academy. And leave the politics out of it.
There was politics before that. The mayor and...
Next.
Who else would like to speak?
Good evening, councilmembers, mayor, fellow Palmdaleians, uh, former graduate myself, graduated back in 2016, Latin honors, highest. CSF Goldsill Bear was awarded A B Future Leaders as well. I believe that, um, my time...
Yeah, I'm sorry, we didn't hear your hand.
Mark Sanchez.
I served on the student's side council as well, as president there. I believe my time there at, at the school really opened my eyes to engaging and see that, uh, no, there's an opportunity to, as president. I'm currently going through the hiring process at Northrop. I went to A B C, did their aircraft fabrication program, got into composites. I really feel that I have the opportunity now to give back to my community and my school as well, to open those young minds and let them know that, you know, there's something out here in your own backyard that was started way back in the 50s by Skunk Works, by Lockheed and the Air Force, is still being predominantly served here best. Came from Burbank, came from, you know, Plan 51, but we, they don't have what we have here. So I believe that my time here as well, to give back, can really allow me, as well as the community, to grow together. And if you'd like me to be on the council, my words are not limited to what my actions can do, my actions can serve way more. And that communication between the city of Palmdale, as well as the TPAA of course, is key. And that's where I can grow on. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who else would like to speak?
Uh, good evening, my name is Julye Sanchez, son of, uh, Mark Sanchez, brother of another Mark Sanchez, and, uh, first thing I'd like to say is that... First thing I'd like to say is that, uh, you get someone like this, they have no political ties, no, uh, no people to, to feed, that, you know, you know what I mean by this, they don't have anyone to, uh, really tell them what to do, to, uh, to influence their decision-making. So when it comes to an appointee for, uh, for a position like this, you want someone that is open-minded, someone that is not influenced by politics, not influenced by other, uh, union groups or other groups that, you know, provide support and, uh, and, you know, financial support, whatever, whatever you wanna say. But, uh, you need someone that's, uh, that's clear-minded, that has an affiliation with the school, you know, not just showing up to meetings, but also being more involved, you know, such as graduating from the school, what's better than that, you know? You actually know someone that can relate to these kids, knows how they think, and knows how the school functions. And I think that's probably the best part of having Mark Sanchez applying for this position, too, because he's young as well, and we need to start, uh, appreciating these young, uh, men and women that try to, uh, you know, include themselves in stuff like this, um. And honestly, too, we do not need, uh, people that are, uh, not, you know, no disrespect, we don't need people that are, uh... Their time is, um, very crucial, you know, in other, uh, in other things, because, yes, I know people who are part of the board as well, Kevin Mickey, so they were very busy, and I showed the meetings with them myself, and, you know, they were not present. We need people who have the time and, you know, who have, uh, the support of everyone around them. And from the school, too, that's the most important. We wanna put people on that board that get support from people who do run the school and attend the school, and they have their full trust and, uh, support behind them. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who else?
Uh, Jason Zing. My, my, just my opinion, uh, a city council member is the second highest position you have in the city, besides the mayor. And the city of Palmdale broke their back for Palmdale Aerospace. So if a, if a council member wants to be a part of a board, then you guys should just agree. It should, there is no political, it's just a board. You know, it's just a vote. You guys could always be a part of committees and all that stuff, but I think it's important, since Palmdale's invested so much in the Palmdale aerospace, I think, if a council member wants to spend that time, then he should be entitled to that, and you guys should support him. That's it.
All right, who else would like to speak?
Good evening, everybody, my name is, uh, David Barr. I applied for this position as well. I'm very humbled at the service you've done, sir, as well as your son. It's amazing to see him applying, following your footsteps. Sir, a council member, I think you made some great points about why you'd be a great asset to it, and as well, you have mentioned about why, you know, there's also other considerations. I'm currently an educator, I'm a Medina student. I've worked in two schools, uh, my primary focus is discipline, school safety, um, evaluations of teachers, I work in my goal is 172. I've worked there for the past seven years, I previously taught high school in Green Dot Charter School in Watts. For three years, three years I taught at the Medina High School in Compton Unified. I taught in L U S D at Queen Illinois Charter Academy before that. I was a Teach for America 2003 Core Member. I've been in education, my mom is an educator, all of my relatives are educators, my mom is currently a principal, um, and I've been following in those footsteps. I'm currently doing my doctoral in educational leadership at William Howard Taff University. I have my masters in secondary education in math, I was the math department chair. I'm the lead robotics administrator, I just went to the national championship in our school, got 13th place in the United States for best robotics IQ. Um, and they got first place in the state competition for their science scheme presentation as well, which I help the kids oversee. I work with the parents, I'm on the ELAC Committee for English Learners. I'm on the SSC Student Side Council, School Side Council, I'm the lead member, I'm overseeing Title One, that is for students with low income, which 90% of my schools have always had, students with low income backgrounds, that we work with to provide free lunch program, to oversee programs, to make sure there's data, and students are improving their test scores based on every subgroup, we're making sure we're doing programs for those. I also oversee Title Nine, which is for gender equality in sports. I oversee suspensions and expulsions, I do due process investigations, I present to my school district, I lead professional developments to the school district, uh, all the Deans of Students, I've trained them on our sort of justice practices, P B I S, positive behavioral interventions in sports. I'm the lead district coordinator on that program with Laco, LA County, and I've been in that training program to help spread that throughout the district. I'm a passionate educator, I recently moved to Palmdale, my daughter is in seventh grade, and I'm passionate about this community, I want this to become a better, a better place. And I'm putting my roots down here, I just bought a home on Gorham Lane, um, proud to be a resident here. I love this community, um, I went to the 4th of July spectacular event, so thank you to everybody who was a part of that, sitting on the council before me on July, or on June 30th, it was an amazing spectacular show, it's a beautiful venue, beautiful park. And I wanna make this community better, I'm passionate, I have a very, very extensive background in educational leadership, I went to UC Berkeley. My bachelor's degree is in educational leadership and peace college studies, I know my time is up, I'm also on...
I owe my time, go first.
Okay, I'm also on the U C Mary Council.
We don't need no time. We, we get the...
I also have a Eric Alsetti also for his Bay's Youth Council, I'm the lead representative for that, for the West Valley, when I previously served over there. Thank you, guys. I urge you guys to, uh, consider me as a candidate, I'm very serious about education and I have a background in everything with math, science, steam, and leadership, and training with adults, with budgets, and all of those things.
Thank you, sir. We're done. All right, anybody else wish to speak? You got your time still.
Okay. I recently...
All right, nobody? All right, then, uh, let's go back to the city council. I think we heard a lot of good things. And I don't mean to, and I focused on this guy from JPL, yeah, it's an easy one to do. No question your passion, both of you. Mark, I know you, and yeah, you're very passionate. Those are all great qualities, that's what we're looking for, quite frankly.
It's what our community is looking for.
It's what best serves our community, it best serves our outcome at the school. And this is where that passion really does leverage into a, a better outcome. And I think we all know that. So it comes down to this council, who can we come to agreement with? It's gonna best suit our purpose. Anybody have any thoughts?
I just wanna follow up. I really would like to, you know, I know Mr. Corio and his background and his education. But here's where the problem comes in, is, um, when we were having some debates about this, um, about two years ago, um, I had solicited an opinion from the Attorney General's Office on our serving on this. And that's where I have the concern right now, I don't wanna see us getting a jam because when I presented a question, initially Attorney General's Office sent me back a, a standard letter, City Attorney's Office was of the opinion it wasn't a problem. I, with all due respect to the City Attorney's Office, I disagreed, because when I presented it and I spoke with the Deputy Attorney General, um, the discussion was, council members, it's already been determined by Attorney General's Office, that you can't sit on a city council and a water agency, or a city council and a school board. And that the, that the charter school board is a de facto school board for a charter school. And, uh, her, her response was, that's a very interesting dilemma and could present a problem. So, you know, short of us getting a definitive answer out of them, but they, they weren't gonna take it up because there wasn't a specific complaint of an issue at the time. I would, I would love to see you back on it, because I understand your passion on this. I don't wanna see you end up in a jam. And that's why I got a concern about that. I, I expressed this concern when we first did these appointments to the, to the council, uh, to, to the charter school. And I, I just, I don't think we need any more hassles. I, I think we need to, I think we need to, I think that there's a certain amount of advantage to, uh, uh, avoid. Now, if we turn around and we get a different opinion, they come back and say, you know what, we looked at it, and after all, it is no problem, well then we got another appointment, we got another vacancy coming up here in a couple of months, maybe the end of the month or something like that. You see what I'm saying, Man? I, I, I love you, man. I just don't wanna see you get a jam. That's what I'm, that's what I'm looking at here, you know?
It's a vote, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, suggestions?
What do you think?
What do you think?
I think we heard a lot of good sides and a lot of good arguments, and I'm, I'm really honored and, and I wanna commend everybody that, that applied for this because it was really good to see the type of interest in serving the community, especially when we have so many qualified candidates, it makes it really, really hard to choose. I wish when it came to all of our appointments like this, we had this many qualified candidates to choose from. So I wanna, I wanna thank everybody for, for coming out today and, and everyone that applied for this. But I do think that there is something to having somebody from JPL on that board, seeing how it's such an aerospace-driven academy. And it's really important that somebody that has had such a long, or has a career and has an extensive background in that field, that, that drives that school, because it really is a specific field that has specific requirements and specific needs to make sure that these kids, when they leave the school, that they can get streamlined into the aerospace business. And that's really, really important out here, that we don't see people coming in from out of this community, outside of this community and getting these jobs.
$22,000.
$22,000. We wanna keep everybody here, working here, with the local businesses that, that support our valley. So it, it's a tough decision, but...
Is that a motion?
Um, yeah, it's gonna be a motion, based on the qualifications and what I think would be best for the, the school and the community, I'm gonna motion for Anthony Wayne.
I'll second that motion.
Very good. Other discussion? Councilwoman Bettencourt, what do you think?
I agree.
Wow. Well, I guess that cuts to the chase. Any other thoughts? Maybe we should go for the question. Just do a voice vote.
Okay. Mayor Ledford?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Corio?
No.
Councilmember Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
It's four yeses and one no vote. Councilmember Corio.
And I gotta reach out to you guys, please don't let this dissuade you. You know, this is, well, for, for you, for Mark. Young guy, you're starting out, you got a lot of...
Many more, I'll do anything.
You will have, and I, and I gotta say...
There's more openings coming, so...
And you, sir, you, you certainly hit, you hit it. And I think you'd be a valuable asset as well, so please, let's don't, don't...
We really appreciate you guys, there's openings for committees and boards here, every year. And by coming out today, you put yourself on the map, you got us, you got yourself on our radar, and, and just keep...
You guys did something that a whole lot of other people don't do. You've not only stepped up to put the application in, but you stepped up to...
Showed up.
Yeah, you showed up.
It takes a lot of guts, and I commend you for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, guys, let's move on now. We're getting ready to go to public hearings, what I'd like to do is, I would like to open up, I, we have two other boards here I'd like to open, to take care of a little bit of business, and then we'll go back to the city council. Uh, let's start with the successor agency, I'm gonna call it to order, and I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Chair Ledford?
Here.
Vice Chair Corio?
Here.
Director Hoffbauer?
Here.
Director Bettencourt?
Here.
Director Bishop?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's, uh, let's call it a order, the housing authority. Will the roll call, please?
Chair Ledford?
Here.
Vice Chair Corio?
Here.
Commissioner Hoffbauer?
Here.
Commissioner Bettencourt?
Here.
Commissioner Bishop?
Here.
Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Commissioner Chalakian?
Here.
We have a quorum.
All right, let's now go to, uh, let's go ahead and do the housing authority, let's keep working this. Uh, item three on the housing authority agenda is waiver for reading a resolution. Move?
Second.
So move, second, all in favor? Aye. Aye? Any opposed? So ordered. All right, with that, I'm gonna recess the housing authority to the public comment period of that agenda. And now let's go back to the successor agency. We have item three, which is the consent calendar, again, the public's opportunity to speak. If you wish to do so, this is... All right, seeing none, let's go back to the city council. We're at item five, the consent calendar. Can you approve?
Second.
Got a motion and a second? Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. All right, with that, I'm going to recess the housing authority to the public comment period of that agenda. And now let's go back to the successor agency. We have item three, which is the consent calendar. Again, the public's opportunity to speak. If you wish to do so, this would be your opportunity. All right, seeing none. Let's now go to item four, consent calendar. Will you approve?
Second.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. And we're now at item five on the successor agency, non-agendized items, public comment. So now we're caught up. Let's now go back to the city council agenda and let's go to item nine, public hearings, nine point one. This is a review of proposed ordinance fifteen oh eight for adoption. We have a, Bud Davis is here.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll also give you a second.
Okay.
This is to introduce the ordinance. This is ordinance number fifteen oh eight, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale, providing chapter ten point zero eight, clean air vehicles. For the municipal code, create a streamlined process for the people of electric vehicle charging stations, consistent with government code section six five eight five zero point seven.
All right. Any questions at this point?
So in two thousand sixteen, the city of California adopted Assembly Bill twelve thirty six, which was codified as government code section six five eight five zero point seven, which required local agencies to adopt an ordinance that created expedited and streamlined permitting process for electric vehicle charging stations. This ordinance would create that expedited streamlined process and provide for nondiscretionary permitting for electrical vehicle charging stations in the city of Palmdale. And this would be in compliance with government code section six five eight five zero point seven. Applicants would be able to submit applications electronically and applications that complied with a pre-approved and publicized checklist will be automatically approved by the building official unless the proposed electric vehicle charging station would have a specific adverse impact to public health and safety. And if the building official does make that determination, then the appeals would be made to the planning commission. Adoption of proposed ordinance fifteen oh eight will facilitate installation of electric vehicle charging stations and provide for convenient, provide for convenient charging of electric vehicles, hopefully increasing the use of electric vehicles in the community. I'm available for any questions. We also have the building official, Bud Davis, to answer your technical questions.
All right. Any questions? Technical rule?
Is there any restrictions of where these can be put or--
There is mandation to the rules of the building code, how electricity can be put. But all new houses as of today have to have rough for EV charging and PV charging. So photo will take and electrical vehicle charging, the rough infrastructure goes in on all new residential construction. So which leads to the next code cycle, the problem currently put in.
I think this is good. It's really important. It's a big push in our state, California. You know, they're pushing for solar, electric, you know, this, that, and the other, anything we can do to help clean up the air. I drive a hybrid electric plug-in vehicle myself and it's been really beneficial. I know the technology is still new and it's still developing and I think as years go on, the batteries will get better and it's going to be something we see more and more of. So I think this is good that we're putting this process into play now so that way it's easier for people to get into these vehicles and get these charging stations put in, not only at their home, but in other locations as well.
This doesn't stop us. You still have to inspect the circuits. They're still subject to, you know, they're just going to basically give you a checklist that says if you put it here and if you do this, then it's just a simple process to get it approved, but it's still subject to inspection and they just, they're not going to just run an extension cords around the garage and do these things, right?
Correct. Yeah, there's still minimum hazards that you're allowed to go through for inspection. The checklist just makes it simple. If they can comply with that, it makes it very fast for me to produce through it, permit, then give them permit. And then inspectors will still go out and look and inspect everything.
It's more of a streamlined process and a lot of these installations, they're not going to be one-twenty, they're going to be two-forty because that's, that's the only way--
There's multiples.
Yeah. There's all under medium and large. That's the only way to get these cars to charge in a reasonable bottom, reasonable amount of time. So if that, I'll make a motion.
Well, hang on.
Or do we need public comment?
Yeah.
Okay.
We'll go through the agenda real quick. Let's, motion to introduce the ordinance. So move?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. All right, this time, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Anybody from the public who wishes to come forward and speak, you merely have to give us your name for the record. Anybody wish to do so?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion, second to close public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Discussion or motion? So move?
Second.
Double so move and a second.
Do you want to charge those cars?
All right, then I'm going to go ahead and let's call for the question.
Mayor Ledford?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Creo?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffbauer?
Yes.
Councilmember Bettencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
We're pausing for the train. All right, let's go to item nine point two, public hearing. And this is, we have director of public, or economic and community development, Mr. Mark Oiler.
And I'd like to introduce Rob Bruce, economic, the planning manager, to present the report.
All right. Good evening. I'd like to start off with reading the title of the resolution. Resolution of the city council of the city of Palmdale approving entertainment permit number eighteen oh seven and dance permit number eighteen oh eight for El Carbonero, located at two-three-two East Palmdale Boulevard, Palmdale, California, nine-three-five-five-zero. El Carbonero is a four thousand square foot bona fide restaurant that received conditional use permit in two thousand and nine from the city to operate, serving alcohol. The entertainment permit and the dance permit are requests to provide entertainment that will consist of disc jockey with karaoke, live entertainment and dancing as an accessory use to the bona fide restaurant. The dance floor is supposed to be a hundred square feet, which is two point five percent of the total area of the restaurant. Anything over forty percent constitutes an i-flot. The hours of operation are limited by the CUP to nine AM to ten PM, Monday through Saturday, and nine AM to nine PM Sunday. It is recommended that the city council approve the entertainment permit and the dance permit with the following condition, that all entertainment activities be conducted in compliance with the municipal code. The operation of any sound amplifier or similar machine device shall not be plainly audible at a distance of fifty feet from the building between the hours of ten PM and eight AM. That concludes staff's presentation. We're available for questions.
Any questions at this time?
You know, I don't think this is going to have a substantial impact on the community. I think it's just making it more business friendly for that business owner to kind of expand his services and try to, try to get more people through the door.
Yeah, they do a great job. Let's just give them another element.
Yeah. It's a totally commercial center there. There's no, really. In fact, I believe to prove this, David.
We're going to hear from the public first.
Okay. What's wrong?
Anybody from the public wish to speak on this item? Merely come forward, give us your name for the record. All right, seeing none. What a motion to close.
Move to oppose public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? So ordered. Move to approve?
Wait. I was going to say, I think it's a great idea. Okay, so I'm really old and I've been in Palmdale a long, long time. And there used to be, there was a time in this valley where you could go almost anywhere and dance. We would dance actually at Black Angus, Buffalo Club, Tony Roma's. There was any number of places on the weekend that we could go as young people to have a good time. And that's really limited down in our valley. So I think this is a good opportunity to bring some of that nightlife back to our youth here in the community. So I think it's a good idea.
I agree with you, Mr. Hall.
Good point.
So, second, Mr. Hoffbauer's motion?
I think he's still there.
We have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion?
I have one.
You're good. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. All right, let's go to nine point three.
And we're still here. I'd like to begin with the review of the title of the ordinance, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Palmdale, California, amending the Palmdale Municipal Code to allow small-scale furniture stores in the C-one zone. Zoning ordinance amendment eighteen oh oh two. Rest of the presentation will be delivered by Justin Sobb.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. So as Rob has said, the proposal is to amend the Palmdale Municipal Code to allow small-scale furniture stores in the C-one zone.
No, it's not. Sorry, the PowerPoint's locked up. We'll keep going, see if it catches up.
Do you need a butcher?
There's actually, you can push, you can do it right there.
Call on the experts.
It's frozen?
Yeah.
Okay, you can do it with the keyboard.
Yeah, it's frozen.
Attorney's talking down here.
It didn't work.
Maybe you can hear what he's hearing.
Title of the ordinance.
Again?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. The proposal is to modify the Palmdale Municipal Code to allow small-scale furniture stores in the C-one zone. The amendment would be citywide, however, the applicant does have a store location on Avenue S. The applicant tried to obtain a business license, but they discovered that furniture sales are not allowed in the C-one zone. They had already signed a lease and invested a significant amount of money in their new stock of furniture, and we urge them to apply for a zoning ordinance amendment. The actual amendment would allow small-scale furniture stores of six thousand square feet or less in the C-one zone. This size limitation would help prohibit large retailers that could overburden a neighborhood commercial center. And furniture sales is a compatible use with other uses in the C-one zone, such as furniture repair, and is less intense than some other uses, such as restaurants or grocery stores. The planning commission recommends that the city council adopt the ordinance approving the zoning ordinance amendment and find that the project is exempt from sequel review. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions you may have.
All right, do we have any questions at this point?
I just have a comment. I want to, I want to thank staff for working with the business owner on this. I think it's really important that we're business friendly to anyone here that's trying to open business, open a business, run a business. And I think the city should be here to do just that. And this shows that this business owner is in a situation where they opened up and they weren't exactly fit into our general plan, but we're doing what we can to make it possible for them to live and we're--
We did a business walk in that center and we met him. Yeah, he's got an ongoing concern, but you want to reward that if you can.
Right.
If it fits. Now, the other side of the issue is the council isn't always going to save you from a lease that you've signed. So if you're in business, it's very important to make sure your zoning and land use is correct before you've signed that lease.
I think the history on that was that that same guy owned a business of a similar nature in that same center long ago. Then we went through the general plan amendment. He never realized that there'd been some changes. And I remember that store when I used to live around the corner from that. And it was never a problem then. I don't see it being a problem now. I was hoping, and when I was approached on it, I told him, I said, well, see if we can get a staff interpretation on this. But it kind of was a little bit more than what the staff could, could do on their own. So unfortunately, you got to jump through this hoop, but you know, I think that, thank you guys for looking at this thing from a logical standpoint. It wasn't a problem before, it's probably not going to be a problem in the future, so.
No, but I think this is a product of a twenty-year-old general plan.
Yeah, exactly.
So we'll get our new general plan done. I think more than this will be the benefactor. All right, how about, unless we have other comments, we could take a motion to introduce the ordinance.
So move?
Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. There's an opportunity now for a public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak to this item? Merely come forward and give us your name for the record. Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Bruce Evans. I represent the property owner and I just wanted to extend my thanks to Rob and Justin. They've been really great. I deal with a lot of planning departments throughout the state and--
And how's ours rate?
You know--
We haven't voted yet.
As the councilor pointed out, this was a hoop. We jumped through it. It wasn't particularly difficult hoop.
He didn't like this one and fired, didn't he?
To the planning department's credit, they kept it simple and easy for us and these guys were just a pleasure to deal with. So I thank them for that.
Good to hear.
Have to answer any questions.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. This is the city of Palmdale.
Who else? Anybody else wish to speak?
Move to close public hearing?
Second.
Got a motion, second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered.
Move to approve the item?
Second.
Motion, second. Any questions? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. All right, let's go to item ten.
Not getting off that easy every time, okay?
New business, ten point one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is the vote, resolution number CC two thousand eighteen dash zero five five, resolution of the city council. The city of Palmdale to join CSAC excess insurance authority, ratifying the city attorney's execution of the memorandum of understanding, but excess liability program, agreement number A six-three-three-four. As the risk manager for the city, the city attorney annually puts out the city's insurance out proposals. out proposals. After receiving the proposals this year, the city attorney is recommending that the city place its insurance with CSAC Excess Insurance Authority. To effectuate that coverage, the city attorney has already signed the memorandum of understanding, and that binds coverage as of July 1, but we do need City Council approval of the resolution to make official the joining of, joining the CSAC Joint Powers Authority, and also binding the city to the memorandum of understanding and the bylaws of the authority. Staff is recommending that the City Council approve the resolution, joining the JPA, and ratifying the city attorney's execution of the memorandum of understanding. I'm available for any questions.
Did you read the resolution?
I did. Would you like me to read it again?
Nope, but I'm going to ask.
Never know, it could slip through here.
Any other questions? All right. Then, you read the title. We're calling for public comments. Anybody wish to comment on this item? Merely come forward and give us your name. All right, seeing none.
Move to adopt resolution number 2018-055.
Second.
Got a motion, second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So ordered. Item 11, non-agendized items, public comments. Your opportunity to address the council on any item you wish. Understand we can't take action unless it's on the agenda. Who'd like to go first?
Hello again, Gary Coak. I'm looking at the globe handbook that was handed out at the start of the meeting, Palm One Connections, and I noticed that they're planning another design project for the transportation center and the infrastructure around it. How many times does this have to be done? I've lived in Palm Dale 20-plus years now, and this keeps reoccurring in some way, shape, or fashion on this area. It's unbelievable. I just, I can't find why they have to go do it again. You know, just, if they're going to do something, just do it now. They've had enough planning. Well, let's get it done with and over with. If we're burdened indeed, if nothing concentrated on making an underpass and overpass over Palm Dale Boulevard, because three weeks ago I was waiting for a bus, and I saw three emergency vehicles, had to wait for the train to go through. And that's a more serious concern than all the infrastructure around the transportation center. That needs to be addressed because there's no real hospital facility on the west, excuse me, east side of Palm Dale. They have to come across Sierra Highway at some point, and the only overpass on that is Avenue L right now. And S, I believe is yes. But still, that's a long way to go, especially if it's happened, you know, in the central part of the city, and they come rushing through, and then they get stalled. We really need to work on an underpass and an overpass for that, instead of playing around with more design, more designing of something that's already been top almost to death already. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Rosie Maynella, and I'm a concerned citizen. I read in the paper recently that you guys, that the City of Palm Dale received a grant to address the tobacco ordinance. Okay. So, on it, while I was reading it, I heard that you had 80 tobacco outlets in the area?
I think 80, or maybe 88. I want to say 88.
Still sounded like a lot for Palm Dale, right? And so, I wanted to make sure that you would take into consideration when you're going out and doing your checking into all these places, if you could also target the New East cigarettes and those flavored cigarettes, et cetera, and try to keep them away from our use.
I think we included that in the ordinance. They're in the ordinance.
Flavored tobacco is a big deal right now.
Yeah, the flavors...
It's kind of scary.
Yeah, because they're pulling in the kids with all these cool, interesting flavors and stuff like that. It's not like it used to be.
I also heard that Senator Look was coming up with a new, something that he's trying to put onto legislature, where we're going to see if the voters would vote on us growing marijuana. And there's already starting to be a big problem. I consider myself a really good parent. I actually chose to be a stay-at-home mom even though I'm a nurse, because I wanted to raise my own children instead of the babysitter. So, they're all really doing really great. One of them graduated from TBA, and she's at UCLA. But I'm concerned, because I see that in my daughter, in my daughter's friends. They're already starting to get into the marijuana scene, and it's very disconcerting, especially the edibles.
Well, we're going to have, we have a committee on that issue that will be working with the citizens wide, citywide, on marijuana as its own issue, just so you know. Maybe you could want to participate in that.
Thank you, Justin came to call.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Yes, sir?
Jason Zink. There was no mention on the Facebook or city website or anywhere of the cool centers. I was just wondering why that is. And also in this, there was no mention of the upcoming City Council meeting or anything like that. So, we need to start doing more to engage the public. Facebook, you guys know about it? The Russians know about it. They know how to play ads. So, why can't the City of Palmdale spend $10,000 on buying ads on Facebook to market people, to start engaging people? You know? I don't like when we have a community meeting on bike trails and stuff like that, and only five people show up. I think the public, like I said, you can have the best hamburger in the world, but if you don't advertise it, nobody's going to walk through the door and buy that. So, the city needs to spend some more money on promotion. You can spend $54,000 on a movie play at X, but where's the money for, there's not one video or website of Palm Dale or anything in the Alton Valley economically. How do you show an investor from outside of Alton Valley that there's things going on? There's people in Alton Valley that don't even know what's going on. So, unless you're a City Council member, nobody knows what's going on. Do you see, you need to let everybody know, not just one group. That's how you have problems. That's how you get accused of doing backroom deals, because nobody knows what's going on. You might have spent on the tree plant, $72,000 is city money. Why don't we go out to the county park money? Out of $45 million, the City of Palm Dale citizens paid into the park fund, we only got $15 million back. That's 33 cents on a dollar. Why didn't you contact Barker? I asked you two years ago to do a youth, a tree planting summer youth program, and nothing, two years. So, no wonder all our money goes to LA. We need to pay for candidate statements. $500 for English, $500 for Spanish, and the signatures need to be done right away. People don't need to be told that they need to collect enough signatures in time. You have to do it right away. You can't wait a week, two weeks. And I want all the candidate statements paid for. It's like Santa Monica. In Santa Monica, they use technology. You guys know about that, 2008? They use, every candidate does a video on the city website, and it's free. And all the candidate statements, they're free. Why can't we do that? Make them even claim the fire tax. This county's going to put $54 million tax on every house, every apartment, two cents a square foot. You guys haven't even talked about it. You know why? Because Barker doesn't tell us now things, and we're always the last to know. I'm not happy at County Supervisor Barker. I don't, I think my countenance was a lot better, and she was a chief deputy again. So, we're going back. She does not support the town councils like they need supported. The town councils would be the 16th biggest city in LA County if they were all connected as one city, out of 88 cities. That's crazy, and they only have one deputy.
It's all good stuff, but you're up.
Okay. I was at the college meeting, and I'll give this to you about their theater, so you can give the council what a good thing they're doing. Also, we need to fight for Palm Dale College permanent campus site for our future. We were promised that 30 years ago. I want you guys to fight for Palm Dale. We only get 3% return on college bond money.
Sir, your time's up.
But can you imagine that?
Sir, your time's up.
The College Board isn't going to do it. Palm Dale Council Member, Mayor, you've got to do it. You've got to fight for Palm Dale.
Sir, your time is up. Thank you.
Fight for Palm Dale, so simple. Or why be on the council? Why be a mayor?
Why don't you run?
I might, I might.
Good. All right, who else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Cynthia Chambers. I went home in Palm Dale for a few years. I'm a former insurance agent, and I just live in War Park and have been spearheaded efforts to dramatically reduce graffiti and theft in my city there and my HOA, and petitioned the city to change and approve pedestrian safety around War Park College. Just wanted to use some background about myself before I mention what I'm here for.
Okay.
I had to leave my home with my husband and stay out of town because my dogs are so scared by all the illegal fireworks. And on the, there is a neighborhood site, by the way.
Sir?
There is a neighborhood site where Palm Dale does put announcements. I know that you have done that, because I've read that neighborhood site on the website. Anyway, I've read on the neighborhood site that other dogs that run away from their homes because of the illegal fireworks, and it's just enormous, an enormous problem, more so in this community than any of the guy I've ever lived in, and I've lived all over the world. It is a fire hazard, it's a noise problem, a safety hazard. Palm Dale can take advice to control this problem from other cities that have better success in controlling this problem, like Bakersfield, where my husband was from, which has a special task force with volunteers from the city taking calls and finding illegal fireworks that are the perpetrators of illegal fires that are being done by a combined fire department and law enforcement task force. We don't have anything that are combined like that. All I can see is that the Sheriff's Department is doing their very best with their limited resources, and Fire Department, what are they doing? I know they may be County Attorney Department, I know it may be a County Sheriff's Department, but they've been working together.
They are, they are working.
They need to work together better, and they need to have a better task force and better solution. As Einstein says, that if you have the same solution over and over again, you're bound for failure, as we can see what has happened in the past. So, I have listened to the Neighborhood Watch, and the Neighborhood Watch Captain, that there was a fireman, former fireman from LA that said that he, he stated that down in LA, they had come up with a plan that had to significantly reduce illegal fireworks down in LA. Why can't we do the same? Why can't we research other cities and what they are doing to significantly reduce this problem, so we don't have to leave town because of our animals, or watch our animals run away from home?
Ma'am, your time is up.
That's fine. Right at the end. I'm asking for you to ask the county supervisor and the state representatives to help the city, and for you to find a solution.
Thank you. Good points.
So, you know, just so you know, part of the problem started escalating about five years ago, when the state cut off the funding for the state investigators. They used to intercept this stuff when it came in for perump, and they just put it back in the budget, but guess when that started? July 1st. So, hopefully, we're going to be able to see some help from the state investigators as we go into the next Fourth of July. But they cut all that money out for all their other stuff, so they've gotten a lot of pressure from everybody, people like you, people like us.
Ask your county representative, or county supervisor, to get a task force for the entire county.
Ma'am, you bring a great point. I got to tell you, though, this is a, this is a state-of-California issue, Southern California issue. No community is immune. Some may be doing better than others. I think your suggestion is a good one, as far as looking at what others are doing, and we should consider some of those opportunities. So, the fact is, it's everywhere. It's epidemic, and it's, and it's, there's no check at the border, so this is where this stuff's coming from.
Well, I guess I need to go door-to-door with my petitions, because that changed my city where I came from.
Yeah, good point.
Part of having our fireworks show is to try to help curb that. I think we did a little bit better this year since we had a show, but it wasn't near good enough. Hopefully, next year with the funding, we can stop some of this from pouring in. Yeah, I watched the videos online from Los Angeles to Oklahoma, all over the country. It's a nationwide issue that they're having, so hopefully, you know, the country as a whole can pull together and stop these illegal fireworks pouring in from other countries that Chinese fireworks...
Yeah, it's other countries, it's Indian reservations, and, yeah, it's totally out of control.
We did, fireworks, illegal fireworks sniffing dogs.
Yeah, agreed. All right, who else would like to speak? Yes, sir?
Thank you so much.
Could I get your name, please?
My name is Matthew Tasselbe.
Very good.
I'm a political science student from Antelope Valley College. This comment or question is strictly or absolutely for academic purposes.
Well, we're not going to do question and answer. I understand your mission. If you want to talk to us after the meeting, you can ask all the questions you'd like. But this, we can't run this like a classroom. I know you're here to learn, and you have a specific focus, but that's not what we do. All right? I'll be glad to talk to you after the meeting if you'd like to do that. All right?
Thank you.
Thank you. Who else would like to speak? Yes, ma'am?
Hello, good evening. Thank you for giving us this chance to speak with you. My name is Jacqueline Air. I'm the Director of Engineering Operations for Air Quality Specialists, and I am here tonight on behalf of the Association of Rural Town Councils. The ARTC has, for a number of years, been concerned with the health statistics in this area. For instance, the Alton Valley has the highest rate of cardiovascular problems, highest in the state, the highest rate of childhood asthma in the state, the highest rate of low birth weight for babies in the state. And the area has not been shown to be in compliance with the federal or the state ambient PM 2.5 standards and the federal PM 10 standards. The ARTC has for some time thought that perhaps some of the sources of our health concerns here is related to the particular, potentially particulate levels in the ambient air. And so, a few months ago, they partnered with the ABA QMB, the Alton Valley Air Quality Management District, to go after grant funds from the California Air Resource Fund under the CAT program. And there have been two submittals, so, well, the first submittal was due April 30. We submitted our application, and the ABA QMB submitted, obviously, because it's the district project, and it was well-received, and the final submittal is due 31 July. We, the grant application that we're seeking will install just over 30 particulate monitors throughout the Alton Valley, from the west to the east, north to the south. The data will be reconciled with metrological data to assess, but first of all, whether or not we actually have a PM 2.5 and PM 10 problem here, and if so, where the sources are. There could be, we've identified at least five. We have the train, which has played this music tonight quite a few times. We have 110,000 cars a day going down the 14 freeway. We have quarry operations in the south, we have ag operations in the east, we have solar operations in the west. And anyway, so I'm here tonight to ask the Palm Dale City Council to please write a letter of support for this effort. We have a letter of support from the City of Lancaster, we have a letter of support, obviously, from the ARTC, the County Department of Regional Planning, the County Health Department, and so I'm here to request you to consider sending a letter of support for this, and please send it to Mr. Brett Banks. If you and I can answer any questions you have, you can contact me or contact Brett. So, thank you very much.
That's a great, great suggestion. Thank you. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name is Sarlin Davis. It's good to see you guys here. I had a few things that I wanted to say thank you for, just observations on that restaurant on the east. I think it's so cool. I really do. It really looks good to me. The solar panels at the school, maybe you guys didn't have anything to do with that, but God knows, I appreciate had not seen those god-awful solar panels on that schoolyard. So, if the school board, great. If y'all had anything to do with it, great.
We all agree. We all agree.
Also, I want to say, my family came from Colorado, coming here five years ago. I moved to Palm Dale because I love, you guys have more trees than Lancaster. I decided if I'm going to be in the desert, I'd like for it to be prettier. We also enjoyed our fireworks, you know, and I thought it was great. You did a fantastic job there at Marie Kerr Park. 30 minutes, 30 minutes. I thought that was cool. Now, I apologize. I'm sure you probably get a lot of people complaining, but I have to tell you, the residents where I'm at, we had happy families, we had happy children screaming, "Ooh, ah." People were just, it was a great opportunity for community, a good feeling. You know, a lot of, I consider families that do a lot of work, they don't get a lot of time going up and down the 14 and trying to take care of families and just have something nice. Now, I do know that this is probably a pain in the butt for those that have animals, but I'm telling you, the whole community where we were, we were having a blast on July 4th. We had a lot of fun just watching that and enjoying it, and it was just nice to have some positive interaction, just regular old neighbors, regular old, just nobody at each other's room, and just having a lot of fun. So, wanted to say that. I also want to say thanks for working on the homeless encampments. I'm still waiting for Mike Miller to get back with me, because I'd like to work with that. Can we finish the already, I don't think I can say that name.
Cardi Q.
Yes, that's what I was...
Yeah.
Can we finish that, please? And also, I want to ask, regarding the electronic signage, I feel like when I'm looking at the signage, our mayor is doing a great job with advertising, and I think it's exceptional, and I'm so glad you don't have that electric signage all up and down the 14. Can we please do a little bit more promotion of Palm Dale and employment opportunities? He's a master in marketing, okay? So, I need, I'm sorry.
They just got that. They've got a bunch more, got a bunch more time on it.
We have six more slides.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I like my city. I love my city. The other thing, too, I do agree with Jason regarding the candidate statements. I would love to see that. I think it would provide a more level playing field. I did not have when I ran two years ago, what, 1,500? And I believe that each district is a separate amount. I'm in district two, the most expensive. I think it was 1,500. I didn't think that money. So, I would really appreciate if it is more of a level playing field, it gives everybody an opportunity to participate, and so I'm all for that. The last thing I want to say, too, is regarding the social media, I was on Facebook, I'm not anymore. I'm a conservative. I had to fight to just put up my conservative viewpoint, so I'm not on Facebook anymore for that simple reason, because I felt like I had to have my own team to just deal with the censorship. I'm on Twitter. I would really like to see more marketing on the Twitter, because I've gone to some of the links, and it'll drop dead. I just want to see if we can up our game on the social media. If you want to put me on it, I don't mind. I don't mind, but I think we have a great place here, and I think we can just step it up. Thanks so much for what you guys are doing.
You know, I just got to interject a little bit. We are stepping our game up in all areas, and, yeah, this becomes a budget item as well, so the organization is aligned, we're moving now, so stay tuned, we'll see how it all rolls out. All right, who else would like to speak?
Good evening. Angel Barra. First, I want to commend and tip my hat off, I give a salute to the mother that was here, opposing all these bakers and... to the mother that was here opposing all these baker's and steak stores and concern about her daughters. I walk down the street or around the corner from my house and I can just smell it, you know, out in the open. It's sad that we have, you know, to lead to this, but if we don't put a stop to all these smoke shops, pretty soon it's going to be dispensary shops if we don't stop everything that's going on. It's going to be sad for the youth that are growing up, especially across the street from schools. Where you could just go across the street, there's a liquor store. You go around the corner, another liquor store. It's sad. I raised my grandson. He went to 12 public schools. You know, Mayor, from one to the other, to the other, from Chatsworth, Resina, Palmdale, Highland. Graduated from charter school, graduated hills, got accepted academically, Stanford University, just graduated two years ago. My wife was all up in the house by it, raised my sons. I got my first son out of gangs, did everything I could here in Palmdale so he won't get initiated in the gang. I did everything I could. He did what he could to get his son to college. Now he's an engineer in New York. I'm proud to share this with the public because it takes anybody that wants to go forward and succeed, it doesn't have to be private, it doesn't have to be public, it doesn't have to be a charter school. You just got to take the initiative and give them that drive. Get them away from gangs, from affiliations that are out there. It's sad. Last night, I was already asleep when I heard a long, loud bang, fireworks. I had a Fourth of July last night. It's sad, but the east side was like a war zone and they just don't listen. It's all about who does more, who's in competition with each other. But I think in the long, recruit more officers, it's, it's our job. But I look forward to, you know, seeing the changes and adding better communities and better environment in this city because people are coming over and just disrespecting the laws. And I don't, I don't appreciate that. So thank you and.
But that follows. All right. Who else would like to speak? Yes, sir?
Good evening, Mark Sanchez. Good night. Mr. Curry, I'd like to start off by saying thank you very much for taking care of the graffiti in our district. You know, it's, you know, it really comes to the point now that we have so much movement here, potential buyers and sellers and, you know, and these little knuckleheads decide to want to, you know, vandalize our community. Thank you very much for taking care of that at the moment. So I really appreciate that and our, our district does. So thank you very much.
Thanks, Tom, for doing that. They're the ones that took care of that.
Sir, I'll tell you, yeah, but you know, it, it does take, you know, it does take time. I understand how it goes, but you know, being on it. My other concern, I know I addressed this question or this concern was with the traffic during rush hour traffic during the schools, school buses, the point of destination and stops. My meeting with our superintendent didn't really come to anything that had some substance or some type of cure for it. And I just want to address again, you being our council member who has that ties as well, please, sir, if you could really help get something in the works. I'm sure there's something going there, but again, just the last meeting I had, it just pretty much, there's a stand seal. And I see something happening. I don't know if during the construction on the 40th, there's two or three kids during that construction of the, the guy in his charger, he would walk right between with his bike. And Good Samarities would help him cross the street. But things like this during rush hour track or during our school session during the process of school, you know, maybe reconsider that. It doesn't take a plan or a schedule to really say, okay, you know what, schools are within this session, everything after usually eight, school's already on, in progress. So if we could really work, if we have any future progress projects coming out here in the AV, in Palmdale, it'd be something great to, to consider. Fireworks keeps coming up. I know our discussion a couple of years ago was bringing fireworks back to the side of Palmdale, Palmdale High School. I think, you know, at one point in time, it would be great to, you know, relook at that, the budget would sit and we could provide something for Palmdale. And maybe we'd have maybe less practitioners lighting their own fireworks on the other side where they come to a show with the family and maybe entertain. I know we lost our Thursday night in the square. You know, I look forward to that every year. So, you know, maybe council can look at your budget and maybe come up with something.
Did you miss the one?
No, 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 actually, no, it was right there.
Oh, it's a half hour. Yeah.
It was great, great.
On the west side, yeah?
Exactly.
Well, it's, that's the venue that works for it. The, the problem we were having was with the, with the school because they put that artificial turf in and the shopping center there was just going nuts because of all the filth that was ending up in the shopping center. So just, that wasn't working over there.
Well, we are doing analysis citywide. So this was a practical, let's bring it back this year. We can do it there. And I thought this year it worked fabulous. However, there's other locations in the city that we should also be looking at. And this is our dynamic. We're a hundred score mile city. We're linear. So once, one place may not satisfy everybody's needs. So this is an ongoing discussion. I can assure you that it's taking place as we speak.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm sorry. We were originally looking for something by Lake Palmdale, but it didn't work out this year. I understand.
And then the amphitheater was kind of, that kind of became the, the obvious spot because of the fact that it already has a stage. You don't have to rent it. It's already got sound stuff. Don't have to rent it. It's already got the fencing. Don't have to rent it. You know, the, it really helped constrain the costs on that as well. So if, 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 everybody wasn't so proprietary when we put the water park in the amphitheater and it would have gone in over by the freeway where it was originally contemplated and said everybody's saying, no, I want mine here. I want mine there. And now we've got a water park that every day we got to drive to the other side of town. And when people on the east side of town got to drive, well, I know you don't, but, and everybody on the east side's got to drive over to the amphitheater. So yeah, it, it, that's the way it worked out. That's what you voted for. We're, we're basically.
Well, the brilliant idea this year was Lake Palmdale at the end of the jetty. And ladies and gentlemen, we really got to get the Palmdale Water District to say, okay, it's not a threat to the water. Other communities do it. And quite frankly, it could be a good opportunity for us to do it. It's up in the middle of our city where we might be able to get a much broader viewing.
Careful, that's for the street east.
Anyway, I'm sorry I interrupted.
Oh, no, no, Brian, I really appreciate your engagement. Another thing that has been a concern, Mr. Hopfire, last night I spoke, and it touches deeply because in my line of business. But again, it's the concerns of our residents. I stand here before you. Directional signs for sales signs. That is becoming a constant problem. It's over and over and over and over. And I understand, create there's some areas that may require, but again, the abuse and it's becoming, becoming a problem, sir. Council, 30th Street, N, and, you know, I told them, my residents that where I farm and do a place of business and I would come forth and address. I know we have our meetings.
Had one last week.
Yes, I was able to kind of model this, unfortunately, but that's a concern.
So just so you know, talked to a couple of those guys.
Okay.
And their response is, write me a ticket. It's a cost to do a business. And unfortunately, that was a response that, and I think you've heard the same thing. So I, I'm not sure what the other solution is there.
Well, the other solution is we work through the board. We'll, and we come up with a winner. And then the board will help us enforce whatever we come to.
Right. But I just think it's time now that we come to a position, you know, you know, due to our market right now being at the peak, that something gets put on the table.
Right.
Some ordinance.
Well, let's bring some urgency. Our city manager's got that. So this becomes a good discussion point. And we've had great collaboration.
Oh, yeah, definitely, sir. But again, I'm here for the residents, not for, yes. Well, thank you all.
No, we got, we got one corner that we both know about and there's six signs on one corner. You can't even read some of the signs because the other guys are blocking them.
Kind of like an election.
It is. Thank you all. Young reading.
Thank you. All right. Who else would like to speak? Yes, sir?
Phil Danny, I live in the greatest place on the planet, Palmdale. All of us have one of these. So you can see, I have an app here and I want to speak about illegal fireworks. The app is called Pulse Point. And on the night of July 4th, I wrote down fires in the Antelope Valley or fire incidents. Sunset that night was 8:08 PM. These were the incidents following that. 8:18 Little Rock, 8:40 Palmdale, 8:51 Lancaster, 8:53 Palmdale, 9:01 Palmdale, 9:08 Palmdale, 9:15 Palmdale, 9:15 Little Rock, 9:17 Lancaster, 9:21 Lake Los Angeles, 9:21 Palmdale, 9:34 Lancaster, 9:35 Lancaster, 9:42 Palmdale, 9:52 Palmdale, 9:54 Lancaster, 9:57 Lancaster, 9:57 Lancaster, 10 o'clock Palmdale, 10:08 Antelope Bakers, 10:08 Palmdale, 10:10 Palmdale, 10:13 Lancaster, 10:17 Palmdale. If you were keeping track, that was 24 fires and/or incidents. I didn't even leave. There were three others. So from about sunset to 10:30 in the evening, there were 27 fires and/or fire incidents. Am I saying these were all a result of illegal fireworks? No, I'm not saying that at all. However, what I am saying is you can draw your own conclusion. I have looked on the same app previous night since that, and the fires and the fire incidents are very close to zero or one or two as opposed to over two dozen. Also, when I turn on channel seven, the night of July 4th, there were breaking news at 11 o'clock, there was a brush fire in Silmar. There was a brush fire in Chatsworth. There was also, I didn't get the location, a house that was on fire. So ladies and gentlemen, how would you like, and you don't have to answer, if there was a partially or an unexploded firework and it landed on your roof and it decided to detonate a little bit later, your house could be on fire. And if you don't think it could happen, it can happen. Also, it upsets animals. I've got hundreds and thousands of cats it upsets, of dogs it upsets. There's horses behind Marie Kerr Park. They're all upset as well. So I want to do this one thing. Here's the stand, the plate, I stepped up to the plate. I want to do this one thing. One is, is it possible to get rid of all the stands? If indeed Antelope Valley fireworks are illegal, why are these, all these stands? Number one, get rid of those. Is that possible? And the last thing is, if I understand it, if you're cited by an official, the first fine is $2,500. I'd like to make that fine $5,000.
Second offense is, third offense is $10,000.
And if you're, if you're in the zone, if you're in a blunt zone, like in a fire zone, you get a ticket for illegal, for fireworks and then you get a second ticket for the $2,500 bucks for two fireworks in the fire zone. So it's, it is $5,000 there.
Okay.
But we're, but our fines are not the same valleywide. You know this. Our fines are the highest in the valley. We're the only city that has legal fireworks sales. But I could tell you communities where they're totally illegal, you couldn't tell the difference. The illegal fireworks are the problem. That's what's blowing up in the air. That's what's, that's what's creating the mayhem that I think everybody's experiencing here. And yeah.
Hey, Chris Phelps uses drones to find them.
I understand. Their, their, technology is going to be our better friend and that's going to help us come to a better conclusion. But today, we have a problem with imported illegal fireworks. That is Southern California's dilemma. And nobody's come up with the answer, but the answer really is, we got to stop them from coming in the border.
I, I was up in Sacramento and I testified on that issue up there with the Public Safety Policy Committee, that they needed to rein, they needed to reinstate that funding for the State Fire Marshal's Office. Unless you start cutting off that, that supply coming in, this problem is not the sparklers and the fountains. The problem is the skyrockets, it's the Roman candles, it's mortars, you know, and so rockets. There's no trouble finding them. They're right there. It's, I could just follow a smoke trail back down to the ground. So.
Sir, we cut you off. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. That was good discussion. I wanted to say, I will work with you, Mr. Mayor. No one's done anything. I'm willing to do whatever it takes. I'll work with you. I'm retired. I have time. I already do some volunteer time, but I'll make time for whatever we can do to get rid of the fireworks, the illegal fireworks. Even though it's a monumental task, I'm willing to work with you and, and anyone else here that is, is willing to do that. Get rid of the firework stands, number one, and, and raise the fine to $5,000.
Those may be, those may be outcomes of a, of a committee. And I'm gonna tell you this, I'm going to ask that we talk about this. We have a point in our agenda where we want to add items for discussion. I will, I will ask that we place an item on our next agenda and talk about it. Maybe a citizen group that could talk about options and we can kind of go down that road.
But you know, each one of those booths provides the majority, quite substantial majority of the funding for the, for the fireworks task force. That is probably not enough at this point, but that's probably not even a legal fee that we're charging them, but the booths charge, the booths pay it because they, they want to be part of the solution. So.
Well, everything's fair game, but that is a city vote. They voted for that. It was one of the issues we incorporated over as Palmdale, just so you know.
So here's, here's an idea to explore. We know that the problem is not safe and safe fireworks. To test that theory, what if we put in monitoring fireworks per year to see if that is, that really alleviates the problem? And that's a start. Maybe through that committee, maybe, you know, put in monitoring for one year to test the theory that it is not the legal.
All you gotta do is drive down to about 72 other cities that don't allow and just take a look in the air. And I was, you talked about, you had somebody, I'd like to find out who your guy is from the fire department because I was 32 years with the city fire department. And let me tell you what, there, it was a war zone and I worked all parts of the city. So we'll talk after the meeting.
Establish neighborhood watch, sir, where we get to know the citizens, the residents, report back.
Well, that's where I think more discussion on this issue is warranted. And we get it every year. It's about time we sit down and talk about it.
I wanted to bring it up because it's July 10th. We're talking about July 4th. And I know the wheels of government move slowly.
They do.
So I wanted to bring that up.
Well, we'll bring it up for discussion next month.
I think, I think we asked for that last year and I don't know that we got anything.
Thank you. All right. Who else would like to speak? I think we had somebody in the back that stood up. Yes, sir?
Hi, my name is, my name is Chris Marzian. Just have a, just want to talk about our neighbor city, Lancaster. Just when viewing them, I, I see businesses like Rite Aid warehouses, Michael's Warehouse, Costco, baseball stadium, courthouse, DMV, sole location, the DMV now. Is it body design that Palmdale is a little lower than Lancaster these days or?
I think we.
There's a, there's a city hall I have envisioned to get all Mancasters of or beyond Mancasters like. That's my question.
Well, just to, just to answer, not every facility you discussed is a city facility. You're talking about the state and the county. And where they locate, yes, that's a, that's a decision that we maybe could advocate stronger for. But outside of that, I think Palmdale has many great elements as well. You know, having community distinction in our community is not a bad thing. It's a good thing. It gets us a variety of perspectives and it gives us a community that's unique for Palmdale. That being said, we're very assertive as far as going after businesses and to locate in our community. So I don't know if you had a chance to spend any time at our Economic Development Office. Maybe you would like to do that and spend a little time with Curtis Cannon. He's our manager and we could talk about our efforts and how we do. He's our manager and we could talk about our efforts and how we do outreach and how we market and how we solicit and how we land, uh, business.
We're also, we're, we're two different communities that, that offer different things, but as a whole, the Antelope Valley, we come together and we share those, those things. But Palmdale has a lot to offer that Lancaster does vice versa, you know, just because of the lay of the land or the landscape. It's just the way it's, it's been developed over so many years, but we're working on that as far as becoming more business friendly and we've seen that tonight as making exceptions and conditional use permit, but they're, they're two different cities, but together we share those resources and, and we, we work together to build a strong community.
Sometimes it's just, yeah, sometimes just opportunity also. The, the landowner that had the parcel where the DMV went, he had the right price on that parcel and that was a private, private guy that sold that parcel to, to the guys from the state.
The city owned a hundred acres, they gave it away for free.
They, they, they looked at several parcels here, you know, and they looked at that. Do you know how the courthouse got there?
No.
Okay, so we'll talk after the meeting, I'll give you the history of the world on that.
No.
Okay, well, you, you asked a question, are you ready for the answer?
I was ready.
Well, and that's one of the good things that we have, you know, we have the Antelope Valley Mall, we have the water park, we have the amphitheater, and those are just three that I can think of right away, so.
Very unique.
They're very unique.
For our city.
That's something that we have and we're proud of.
All right, who else would like to speak?
I did.
Did you speak, I?
I did, twice.
But this is the public comment.
Not, but just, I wanted, I just wanted to add.
Okay, go ahead.
Is it okay if I add?
Well, I want to make sure everybody that hasn't spoke has a chance, looks like we're there.
Absolutely.
You could, you could.
You're good, yeah, anybody else?
Any more?
I, I just want to make sure that, I, I've been here since 1985. I moved my family from La Cueva, California, that's where I was born and raised. I've seen this city and this valley change from nothing to nothing but pluses. There was only a Chase and Penny's, Bank of America, Kmart, Bombs and the Yum Yum Donuts. I got lost, that's why I knew Yum Yum was there, one of Vegas. But to make a long story short, I like to see progress here too, like a Costco on the east side, something that we don't have to go to Lancaster and leave our tax money there, we can bring it here to our own state. I'd like to see changes on the east side also. Hopefully, you know, with the future, what brings to us with development, private industries that come over here and want to, you know, build, it would be great to see the changes. I have my neighborhood, I took a walk around the neighborhood, they says, "How come we don't bring an In-N-Out right on 40th and Palmdale Ward? I don't know."
But who in their right mind would deny an In-N-Out in our neighborhood?
Absolutely. It should have been a Four Points already, but we have cesspools over there, we don't have sewage line. We know what the difference is between Four Points and what we have over here. We would, I think Four Points would have been a great, great location for anything that was built, but that gas station there is a parking lot, can't even get in and out. That's all dangerous is, but just wanted to add to what the gentleman said and look forward to seeing the changes there. Thank you very much.
Very good, thank you. All right, anybody else? I want to thank everybody, we had some great comments tonight. All right, let's go now to item 12, store informational reports.
Okay. I'll start. All right, not to jump back into fireworks, but we had the fireworks safety press conference I attended with the mayor, given a rundown of what's legal, what's legal, all that stuff. It was, uh, it was well received, maybe it could have been better, but we do it every year and we try to get the message out to the residents about fireworks safety and, and you know, what, what's not allowed, what's safe and sane, kind of just develop that message better. I attended a Flag Day celebration at the airpark, awesome event, really good to celebrate our nation and, and you know, pay tribute to our veterans and everyone who served and dedicated time for the city and the community, to the state, to our country. I attended the AV and Q and B meeting, we've still got plenty of grants we're giving out for businesses that need to convert their old diesel or gas burning equipment, trucks, all that stuff. We're still helping businesses get into newer equipment with grants, so it helped clean up the air and helps make a cleaner environment, healthier environment for all of us. I attended a ribbon cutting at Olive's, Mediterranean restaurant, they just opened over by the mall in between, um, the Dick's Bar. And Chipotle, they're in there, they're, they're right in between the both of them, awesome food, very well attended and I'm really glad to have, have them in Palmdale. Attended the homeless training workshop where we got a lot of information as far as the outreach into the community, to the homeless people. I want to commend staff for all the research going out there and, and kind of assessing who's out there, how they get there, what the problems are. It's definitely not a one, uh, solution fits all, everyone's got different needs and everyone's got different problems and that's part of what this is all about. It's, it's a long road ahead, but we've started the process now to try to forge ahead and make the homeless situation better as time goes on here in the city. I attended the Freedom Celebration, which was, was, was amazing. It was one of our campaign promises to bring back the fireworks show to Palmdale, so I was very happy that we could do that, that was, that was very important for us and I got very good feedback from that, people were very happy. The amphitheater was a very intimate setting, people were able to look up and feel the explosions and celebrate America in a very safe and passionate way. And thanks to our city manager and staff for putting that together and listening to the council's needs on that one. I attended my sheriff's boosters meetings, uh, there we're buying more tasers and equipment for our sheriff's department, stuff that they desperately, desperately need to help keep us safe out here. So the equipment that, that they need, they, they come to us and we see what we can do to get them, get them the extra equipment as far as, you know, the tasers, the beamback guns, bulletproof vests, all that stuff that the county can't quite support or can't quite bring, we can bridge that gap and make it even safer out there on the streets for everyone. I had various meetings with some developers and other people regarding getting, getting more houses built, getting more apartments built, condos, townhomes, multifamily, stuff like that, that's, it's a big issue right now, we're in a housing crisis and we need, we need more housing units, especially for the youth that can't afford to move into a two-story home or a one-story home, they're looking for an apartment or something smaller, so. There is more stuff, but I'm always out there in the community, I make myself available all the time to my residents and to anyone online that needs help or assistance with any kind of problems they're having, whether it be fireworks graffiti or problems in their landscape maintenance district with trees blown over, leaves falling into backyards, whatever the issue may be, I'm always out there and available and I'm happy to be a part of the community and I'm happy to serve. So there's more, but I'll let my other council members dive into that.
All right. Would you like to go?
Sure. I was at the same AQMD meeting with Mr. Bishop, that actually was almost $100,000 in funding. If you've got a business and you've got old diesel machinery, let us know, man, there's money out there. That, a huge function of that agency is to give money, get, get your tax dollars out of Sacramento and back into the community. And unless you put the application in, you know, if it's the old deal, if you don't ask, the answer's no, okay? So there's money there for you. And it was over a half billion dollars in, in, in emissions reductions funding that we authorized, $26,000 and not so, again, there's a lot of money goes through that place, got to fill out your form. The, uh, attended the SCAG, Transportation and Regional Council meetings, there's, we're gearing up for the next RENA and for the next, uh, round of, uh, the strategic planning on transportation that's coming up. I attended the League of California Cities Public Safety Policy Committee meeting, that whole agenda's online, but basically it was a recap of the end of year bills that are coming forward, some of the issues that, um, some of the stuff that was being vetoed, some of the stuff that was getting on the back burner, um, the proposition reform items were basically sandbagged by the state, so you won't see that for two more years. Attended the Frog Fest, uh, the, uh, fundraiser for the Help for Heroes program there, Mitch Speed was the recipient, his family accepted that for him. Mitch passed away the other day, I don't know if any of you guys met him. He, he was the singer at Sergeant Owens funeral. He was an amazing man, he was inspirational, uh, he had such a level of personal commitment and he was at, I mean, he was an amazing guy, it's a major loss for this valley, but many of us are, were very, very blessed by just being able to know the guy. So I'd like to ask that we adjourn in his memory this evening. I attended the Amigos de la Fiera, Friends of the Fair fundraiser, we're trying to get a new building built out there, celebrate the Latino heritage of the valley. There's kind of a plaza, but there's, we're, they're working on a program to get a actual building so that stuff, stuff, this isn't sitting in somebody's garage someplace, we can get it out there and celebrate that part of it. Vets for Vets, that was a great deal, we even had some city, uh, city management staff that came out there and got covered with colored dust and stuff like that, that was a really, a lot of people were out there, it was a great, it was a great event. Liability, Sheriff's Liability Trust Fund Oversight Board, happy to announce that as a thank you City Attorney's Office for, for what you've done on, for our insurance, we've got a new carrier and excess, there's several layers in the Sheriff's Department of excess coverage and we've got those coverage, we've got that stuff in place now, uh, the cost was actually surprisingly less than what we were anticipating it was going to be. So it took a lot of work to get that stuff in place and it took, uh, between the electeds, between the staff and the city managers division over there, that team, that, you know, hey, we're not going to keep paying this huge amount of money, you guys need to get this stuff figured out. So, uh, right now, we could probably put, I don't know, a lot of deputies on the road for, for what the, what we're paying for liability funding right now. The Active Transportation Workshop was very, was very small, but informative. California Contract City Legislative Committee, uh, similar focus with the league, but has specific things to focus on cities' abilities to be able to contract for services, uh, so we went over the bills and stuff that were relative to that. Anybody's interested, that entire agenda's online, Contract Cities. Homeless Workshop, I was there also, um, the, uh, same thing with the, at the Desert Mountain Division, uh, meeting, uh, again, that was dialing in, uh, regional legislative agendas and to advocate for our cities at the state level. The, I got to tell you that what the, what the Sheriff's Boosters Clubs do to provide these less, less lethal weapons and, and tools out there is really important to help them keep those carrier rates down as well. Attended the Wilsona ribbon cutting for the first electric school bus in the valley, uh, they were very excited. Uh, the bus driver was not happy with me when I started arousing course of wheels on the bus, so she was, uh, she wasn't happy with me on that one, but.
You're a fun bus, right?
Given the opportunity, you go for it. I was at Olive's with these guys, I was also out there at Flag Day, um, the, we've also had some issues that we've been dealing with, I want to thank the staff for their stepping up and their prompt response to some complaints about bug issues, uh, helping with the, uh, positive disposition on the, on the homeless stuff and on the concerns we're getting right now on the bobcat that's, uh, out there running amok out in the.
Rancho Vista bobcat.
The Rancho Vista bobcat.
Yeah.
And I mean, that, that cat's all the way down, it's crossed Rancho Vista Boulevard and it's down by the schools now, so, uh, we got, we're going to stand by for some further on that. So with that, I would like to ask that we adjourn with, uh, in memory of Mitch Speed and.
Mitch Speed?
Mitch Speed, yes.
Yeah, we'll do that.
And all the other stuff that we do, but you know, that's, that's critical stuff, so.
All right.
Okay, well, for me, I attended some of the same events already mentioned, like the homeless workshop. What was interesting to me on that workshop is the amount of information that we were provided with, but also the other organizations that showed up for the workshop. They're willing to work together with the City of Palmdale Homeless Plan that will be coming up soon, I believe, for the council to approve. But the, the, again, the other organizations that are already doing, addressing the homelessness, wanted to come onboard together with the city to make that even more, make a bigger impact, as they're doing it for themselves now. So the bigger, the number of organizations working, the better that we can all address that issue. The Amigos de la Feria also, attended that, uh, at the AV Fairgrounds, an attempt to create a Hispanic heritage plaza at Fairgrounds. I attended the Music at the Park, Dominique Masari's past Thursday, it was great to see the community coming out, it was hot at 5:30, I showed up there a little bit before, it was quite hot.
It is hot.
But then it started to cool off a little bit by 6:15 or so, uh, but it's great to see the community coming out and enjoying the, the events that we have to offer to our residents. Also attended coffee with a cap on Thursday also, we're very well attended over at the McDonald's on the east side on Palmdale and Third, um, great, great participation as And just wanted to let you guys know that the concert was starting up for the amphitheater, I think this Saturday is the first concert, remember to, I mean, show and have a great time with a jazz musician, I believe this was on, on the line. And also Movies at the Park, also at the same location.
Angela, that's fun, yeah.
Uh, that's my report.
Um, right after our council meeting last time, about two days later, I flew out of town and I've been on vacation, but I managed to fly back just in time for the homeless workshop, even though they lost my luggage, I still was able to come. But the homeless workshop was really, really informative and interesting and to have all the partnerships that were there, which is, was good to see. The TPAA school meeting was canceled because we did not have a forum, the TPAA retreat was canceled, um, I did not attend the prison meeting this month, um, I did not go to the Olive's ribbon cutting, but I have eaten there twice since they opened, so.
They have two different kinds of doma, they're both very good.
Really, really good food.
Excellent.
And yeah, I'm, I'm still actually on vacation from my daytime job and I'm back in town.
Welcome back.
Yes, and it's hot here, but it's hot in the south where I was and very humid there, so I'm glad not to have the humidity anymore.
Well, I agree. The summer nights here are awesome, that's why I live here and I can tell you that the events we do at night are just great. I mean, our, our Fourth of July event was just, it was just quality, it was a quality event and everybody seemed to be having a great time. That was, that was great. Couple that with a, the Flag Day at the Joe Davies Airpark. Again, we have great veteran support here in this valley and Americana support for our great nation, and so those are two good events. I went to a third event with Vets for Veterans at the Palmdale Lake and there they had a whole day of events that they would, vets would be able to do from archery to, to horseshoes, to boating, to fishing, and it was just a good outreach, you know, it was just, it warms your heart to see that. And then you turn right around and you connect it back to our homeless plan, I'm going to give Mike Miller a shout out for that, good job, and I think the valley recognizes we've got a good plan, we're solid and we're unified with our stakeholders and that's the important message. And more housing being developed, we just opened another fourplex over 10th Place East, what, about a week and ago, 10, 10 days ago, uh, getting ready to do another one over off of, uh, Fifth Street East. So the housing side of our homeless plan is, is really our partners, that's who's been keeping us going all this time and it's, it's kind of an under the radar for whatever reason, but we're touting it now, so we're giving Mike Miller some credit for his organization, his department doing a good job, I think, with collaboration, understanding, you know, what that event really is all about. I tell you, I do go to, uh, we had our sanitation district meeting this last month in both cities of Lancaster and Palmdale, just routine business, basically, not, not a whole lot of new things. Our treatment plans are built, so right now it's a matter of polishing that up to make sure that those are, got everything they need to maintain the. make sure that those are, got everything they need to maintain the tertiary treated water we're going to have now forever out of our treatment facilities. And it's a, it's just a perfect match, I think, for what the Antelope Valley needs, this reclaimed water. So sanitation district's in full effect. Lots of ribbon cuttings. I go to just about every ribbon cutting that's available just to say thank you to the business community for opening up in our community. And so those have been very good. Some of them we've heard already tonight. I can tell you, our concert's in the park. We're going to have one this Thursday here at Ponce on Square. I invite you to come out. It's not a big fancy deal, but it's very quality and it's very, I'd say, family orientated. Kids, relaxed time, all you need is a lounge chair and your flip flops, and you're good to go. So that's a great event. Our concert series starts this weekend, Saturday. Our movie nights have already started out there. These are great events for the whole family, and I can tell you, you will not be disappointed if you show up out there. So I think all in all, we have great collaboration. I go to all the chamber lunches, and again, I go back to the business community when we walk these districts and walk these centers. We get pretty valuable intel about what's going on in Palmdale and the business community side. And I can probably tell you the most acclaimed response we got was the center where In-N-Out Burger is. Every single one of those business owners had something to say about the motel across the street, the people just preying on them every day and without much support or help. And so taking that back and cleaning that up has had a humongous difference in our downtown. I can tell you, everybody from the school to the business community to the residents love it. So anyway, good job to the staff on that one. Pretty difficult issue, but a good outcome. Anyway, that's kind of where I've done this month. I think we could see we're all pretty busy. There's a lot going on in this valley, and if you don't think there's anything to do in the Antelope Valley, you're not, you're not looking very hard because there's a lot to do.
There's like an event every night.
Just about, just about. All right. That's that. Let's go now to item 13. Any requests for new agenda items? I'm going to bring up the need to have a discussion on fireworks, and I'd like that discussion to entail the possibility of bringing the citizen group together to talk about options and their perceptions and maybe their resolution on how we could do better. So anyway, I'd like to bring that up next month so we can maybe scope out if that's something we want to do and we can talk about maybe future steps.
Could we also take a look on that same topic? There was a lot of discussion, I got bombed with emails about a program that Covina put together, but it's kind of like a, it's a citizens arrest program because all these drones and all that stuff is interesting, but the cop has to see it happen. So they have to pinpoint the guy. So we spent a lot of time talking with the Sheriff's Department about this. But Covina put a program together where if it's really bothering you, then you can, you can sign the paperwork. You must provide pictures showing the person and then, and sign the paperwork that you're going to go to court on it because a cop can't arrest them for a criminal prosecution.
So.
Right.
Covina or Chino Hills?
No, you're right, Chino. It was Chino.
Biggest riverside.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It was Chino. I'm sorry, I got this.
And there may be other examples of that.
But that was just a recent one. There was a big article in the paper, it was on the news, it was on social media, it was on TV, and with a mixed bag of feelings from the residents they were interviewing about it. People were either extremely skeptical about, you know, they want their tires slashed, and there were other guys that just said, "I don't care. I'll, I'll, I'll go to court on this thing and I'll sign whatever we need." So can we find out if in fact it made any difference whatsoever and if it, what kind of response they got on that? Or, because so many times we see these things get passed and it's really feel good to get the guy that was complaining to shut up, you know? And that's not effective at all.
Also on that topic, when we have this conversation next time, I want to make sure that Councilman, Member Carrillo's idea of looking at a moratorium for one year, if we could at least consider that.
Yeah.
I think it would be a social experiment to see what happens.
We have time this year for, but that should not be a flippant decision.
No, but it, you know.
Needs to be one that everybody knows what's coming and we all have a chance to participate if we're back for that.
Yeah, but we keep saying that legal fireworks is not a problem. Let's test the theory.
Well, I can see, 72 cities, you can go check that out.
Well, I understand that, but that's your example.
Right.
And there's many cities.
I'm just glad that we're taking this, you know, serious and we're going to have a discussion.
If you don't think it's serious.
A year ago, when I brought this up, you guys looked at me like I was Satan, and I got a lot of, a lot of complaints and pushback from the people that actually make the money off of these fireworks at these booths.
Nobody's making money.
Nobody's making money? Those charities aren't making money? Then why are they doing it?
No, no.
Yeah. But what I'm saying is, I'm glad to see that finally we're actually going to have an honest, open discussion about this because I've been fighting for this for 18 months.
I agree, and I think this is in a format, I think, of maybe a community group discussion. So you can go down these paths, you can talk about what other cities are doing, and we can have the time, because we can spend a whole council meeting talking about.
Why don't we do this workshop?
Well, maybe it is a workshop.
That's fine.
Next month, let's talk about those options. Because I think I hear a lot of citizens that have an interest in this issue that may not be here at every council meeting that would maybe show up for a specialized discussion.
Can we, can we shake the tree over at the fire department and actually get the in-for first report this time? We asked for that, and last time Cozy was off, and we never, we never got it. We never got any sort of comprehensive report on activity, and a lot of it was just merely anecdotal. So let's get it. Because I can tell you, every year, I look at the in-for first report. These aren't, these aren't being caused by the.
I would agree with that. But residents seem to understand that.
That's actually.
So I'd like to know how many tickets we wrote this year. I think that's, that's something we should be advertising.
15?
396 locations, 15 tickets, 19 fires.
Better than last year. Last year was nine or 10.
Last year we rolled, what, 18 tickets?
If you look how long it takes to deal with each one of those and then having to deal with all the drunks that are out there in the street, I talked to the lieutenant earlier about that, and that screwed up one whole operation because of guys that want to fight with you. It wasn't the fireworks that was a problem, it was the drunks.
Exactly. But the community needs to appreciate this. We get that information, we know it, and yet our residents don't.
Well, these people are so dumb. We're sitting in the, in the parking lot for the Starbucks, and the guy fired the rocket right over the top, and I'm standing there talking to two deputies, and he fired the rocket and it blew off right over our head. And, but you could follow the smoke trail right back down into the guy's yard, and it stopped after that. So it's probably one of those tickets.
I think, I think you're getting the gist.
I think so.
All right. Anything else?
Yeah, actually, can we get an update on the FEAR resolution update? I know that, is that still going on? The consultants are working on the FEAR resolution?
Yes, okay. Just about wrapping up.
Where are we with that? Maybe you can wait for next council meeting.
Okay. Could we get a report too? I've had people asking me about stuff that can, being on the ballot and whether the, whether it's from the community or whether it's from the council, and what the deadlines are for those kind of things. Could we just get maybe, it could probably just come in the form of a memo or something.
Yeah, we can memo the boxes.
Yeah, that'd probably be the easiest thing, yeah, so.
All right. Anything else?
Yes, one more thing. The RFP or RFQ that you're working on for the Soca facility, you can tell us where we are with that. I think it started in March.
So we issued the RF, it was an RFI, Western Interest. We received one proposal, it wasn't complete, and so we're going back out on that. The company that we had actually done a site walk and so forth with did not submit. We contacted them, and they indicated they hadn't gotten the email or the solicitation. And so we're going to double check, but we're going to go back out on that.
Only one out of five responded, or?
One, I think we ended up with seven or nine. We put a list together and then issued that out to, we had one and it was, it wasn't even a half a paragraph. And so, but then when we reached out to the one that was interested, they expressed renewed interest, and so we're going back out.
Anything else? Ladies and gentlemen, I want to thank you for being here tonight. I think we've had a good meeting.
Actually, let me just slip in, can we add a discussion in about the candidate statements?
It probably won't. If anything changes on that, it won't be for this election because I think we have people filing papers next week. Is that correct?
Yeah. Right, but it's still, you know, it's all about the future.
Sure.
It's all relative.
Yep.
Okay.